Will Page votes aye.
Thank you, Will. Chris, are you on? All right. To Carol.
Oh, yes.
All right, I will first read the consent public hearing items. Number one, a request from Boeing U.S. Holdco, Inc., represented by Jorge Planta, for review and approval of public hearing site plan take five car wash for property at 6250 Southeast 14th and for type two design alternatives to allow a building setback of 87 feet from the east property line where a primary frontage build to zone of zero to five feet is required. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Item number, our item one will remain on consent. Item number two is a request from Tenfold Capital LLC, represented by Becky Hile, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Tenfold Capital LLC site plan improvements for property at 1082 21st Street for type two design alternatives A and B. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number two will remain on consent. Number three, it's a request from 4820 Ingersoll Prop Co., represented by John Manfredi, regarding property in the vicinity of 4820 Ingersoll Ave., to amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use designation from medium density residential to high density residential to allow development of the property with a density greater than 17 dwelling units per acre. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number three will remain on consent. Number four is a request from Hoyt LLC, represented by Ryan Wade, regarding the vacation of an alleyway service rights of way adjoining property in the vicinity of 1601 High Street to allow trash enclosure gates to swing into the right of way. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number four will be heard on the public hearing. Number five, request from Hoyt LLC, represented by Ryan Wade, for review and approval of public hearing site plan High Street Loss for property in the vicinity of 1601 High Street for design alternatives, type two design alternatives A and B. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public that will also take number five off and hear it in the public hearing items? Number six, a request from LDS Enterprises, represented by Larry Sprogg, for the following property at 4415 Hubbell Ave., A and B. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Thank you, Andy, that will be heard on public hearing. There is one item that was possibly up for moving to consent. Item number eight, it's a request from Langworthy Enterprises, XII, the eighth, represented by Daniel E. Langworthy, for the following property located at 1327 13th Street, A through C. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Do I have a motion to move number eight to consent? Thank you, Frances. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote? Is Chris on? Okay. Number eight will be moved to consent. So, on consent, I have number one, two, three, and eight. Do I have a motion to move consent? Thanks, Frances. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Chris, are you on? Okay, we're going to start with item number four, which I already read, so I'm not going to reread it, but Bert will be presenting for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Rust, planning staff for the city. Items four and five are interrelated, but they are two separate items. Item four is for a vacation of right of way, which goes on to city council after tonight's meeting.
Aye.
Whereas item five is a site plan, which the commission is the final decision maker on that. So as long as nobody appeals the commission's decision on number five, that ends tonight. So that's why numbers four and five are being considered separately. So anyway, item number four is a request to vacate a 95 square foot area of an east-west alley. It would allow for a trash enclosure to have doors that swing into the alley. I'd point out that the right of way would only be leased to the property owner, it would not be sold. And as you'll see in our conditions, we're recommending that the doors be, doors be required to remain closed anytime the garbage truck isn't there, so that the 16-foot wide alley remains passable. So the site plan on item five will actually, if you can see the cursor, be for these, generally these two parcels right here, and there'd be a trash enclosure on the northwest corner that would have gates that swing into the right of way. So here's a photo looking west down that alley right of way. This alley right of way would be paved as part of the site plan. Again, that's in item number five. Here is a, just a rough layout of where the trash enclosure is in relation to the proposed building. This brown area represents where the building is, and then the trash enclosure is right here at the northwest corner of the building. It would just be the gates that would swing into the right of way. And in order to have gates that swing, or doors that swing into public right of way, you need to have a lease from the city's real estate division. So here's a elevation of that building that would be constructed immediately south of the alley, right here where the cursor is. This is that trash enclosure that would have gates that swing into the right of way. And then this is a floor plan from that building. And again, here is the trash enclosure here at the northwest corner that would be constructed right up to the property line. Those are the gates, so. And our staff recommendation, we are supportive of the request. We've just recommended three conditions. One, that they reserve any easements for any existing utilities. That's just a standard condition. But then the other two conditions are really specific to this situation. We said that the requested vacation shall be leased, not conveyed to the applicant, and that's to ensure that the alley does remain open to vehicular traffic. And then the third condition is any future door swing easement shall note that the enclosure doors are to remain closed except during trash pickup. We did get one comment card back from the owner, and it shows up as a circle since it's been condo, their condos there. And I'll zoom in on this so you can read it. And on the next page, there's a sketch that will go along with these comments. I can come back to this, but this is the sketch that the neighbor provided. There's a garage immediately to the north that backs out into the right of way, so their concern is that the, by vacating this right of way, they're not going to be able to back out of the garage safely. But it's staff's belief that the conditions we're recommending should ensure that there is still room to back out of the garage and for traffic to pass through on the right of way. Were there any questions for me?
All right, thanks, Bert.
Thanks.
Is the applicant present? Can you come up? The applicant, oh, sorry, the applicant. Please state your name, address, and then you have 10 minutes.
Hello, my name is Mike Welch with Welch Design and Development, here on behalf of the applicant, Ryan Wade. I'm also, the architect is here as well as a construction manager. If there's additional need for those questions, my address is North Liberty, Iowa, so I don't know if you need the actual street address or not. As far as the item number four, the alley vacation, thank you for the presentation. I think you kind of outlined everything pretty well. A comment I would like to make is, again, kind of reiterate that it's an easement in the alley, we're not actually taking any of the alley away. As part of that, we are repaving the alley, where it's not really paved now, and it's gravel about nine to 11 feet wide. We'd be coming back in with full concrete pavement. We're proposing 14 feet of paving in the 16-foot wide alley right of way. That opening for the gates would be a keyed, a locked, locked gate, and the property manager and the trash collection company would be the only people with the key to those gates. On the users of the trash, the building occupants would access the trash enclosure through a pedestrian access that's shown kind of on the south side of that trash enclosure, that southwest corner. You can kind of see it in that picture that's up there right now. There's a gap in the wall on the west side of the trash enclosure. So I think in our opinion, that kind of ensures that the gate stays closed when it's not in use, and that it would alleviate those concerns for anyone trying to use the alley, that the gate would be open inadvertently, you know, during a time when trash isn't being collected. And, you know, I think the other things that we would look at there, too, is just that that alley remains intact for, for access. The edge of paving now is where the trash enclosure gates would be, that coincides. So even by putting those gates there, it doesn't really change the, the access point for the neighbor to the north. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
How often is trash picked up?
That hasn't been, like, finalized yet, but we typically see it's every, like, every other day is pretty typical for a building of this size.
Thank you.
Will you be supporting both trash and recycling?
Correct, yep. There'll be two bins in that enclosure, one for trash and one for recycling.
Thanks. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ask, one last question. How long does it take for the trash and recycling to be picked up when they're there, typically?
Typically, you know, I would say we're probably in, in less than 10 minutes if they're doing one. What it'll be in this case with the orientation, the trash collection truck would be driving east or west in the alley. The driver would get out, open the gates, manly roll the, the trash enclosure or the trash container into the alley, and then probably move the truck back forward to pick it up on the forks. They dump it, set it down, and put it back. And then that one would leave, and presumably the recycling truck would come either same day or a different day.
Thank you.
Mike, I thought of one more.
Yep.
Are there any bollards or anything that stick out beyond, you know, that will be installed beyond the structure that you're describing to help protect it or anything like that?
Yeah, we would most likely have a bollard on each corner. Right now, the, the face of the trash enclosure is actually eight inches off that right-of-way line. That bollard is typically four to six inches, so that would sit kind of right at the, the face of the bollard would be right at the right-of-way line.
And within your property?
Yeah, on our property, yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Will you just sign in for us, too? Appreciate it. All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Please come up, state your name, address. You have five minutes, and then sign in when you're finished.
Hello, thank you for having me here. I am Josh Bogus, 614 16th Street, and the illustration up there. I'm opposed to this as my garage back is directly across from the enclosure there. I'm making it difficult to get in and out. For one, was one of the reasons why I'm in here. I do think that the property and the zero setback will directly, not only impact my ability to get in and out of, of our property, even with a mid-sized vehicle, the reduction of the zero foot setback, I think will make it very challenging as well for traffic to use the alley going multiple directions, especially in a busy alley with lots of people walking in and out of that alley as well, within the neighborhood, whether it's going to the multiple establishments inside of there. And by not having that setback, I think it'll continue to make it difficult in the winter time, as with snow and other pieces, just harder for cars to move around in it. I think another thing to call out here is that there is, the property owner owns all the property adjacent to that as well, so there's, with being new construction, gives the opportunity to find other areas to place the trash enclosure here, which didn't, wasn't really addressed inside of there, as it was only addressing the easement, not the rest of the property that's available to place that enclosure in there. Are a couple of the big concerns here, I have an adjacent neighbor as well that has, that we share a property offensive line with that also uses that alley for parking, that has expressed similar concerns as we look at that, and that's that 614 Woodland Avenue address on there, as well as they have a car entrance or port in the back, too, that would be impacted by that there. So those are my biggest concerns that we see inside of here of having that there, is really just people's safety is probably one of the biggest ones, as with Big Grove Brewery there, with all the shows that are happening at Hoyt Sherman, and even Carl's Place next door, there's a lot of people walking through there at any given time, and just the more narrow that you make that, the more risk that people could get injured as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, please sign in when you're. Are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak against this item? Or neutral? Please state your name, address, five minutes, and sign in when you're finished.
Good evening, my name's Angela Broughton-Romain. I live at 731 16th Street. I'm the president of the Sherman Hill Association, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the association. We do oppose this variance for the reason our residential neighbor just spoke about. This is an area with increased density and increased traffic, and the, the proviso or condition that the, the property owners are protected because there's a rule that the gates should be closed, in our view, is inadequate. Don't know if you've been around any alleys in Des Moines or in Sherman Hill lately. A lot of rules are being broken there, and I do think this is going to be, you know, over time, an increasingly, potentially serious issue with an inconvenience to longstanding residents, and also people just trying to, to get in and around our neighborhood with the expansion of businesses. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak on this item? The applicant does have some time for rebuttal if you want to address any of the concerns presented.
Hi, Angie Fonkoo, I'm the owner's rep for Hoyt LLC. Just a couple things. The trash enclosure is probably one of the first that is going in this neighborhood because it is a city-directed item, and so we have to build them a certain way with the gates and concrete and all the things that we all like to spend money on. So I do know that a lot of the alleys in the Sherman Hill area do have dumpsters, not these full enclosures, so we are capable of locking them because it is a full enclosure. And with the man door where our tenants are going to put the trash, it really should only be the garbage truck that is back there and the recycling truck that is going there. The other thing was, the alley width is not going to change, it's just up to the setback and all of our, in this item and the next item, all of our things are staying on our property, we just need that extra area. So we're not changing the width of the alley at all. And then just finally, none of our tenants will be using that, so as far as added traffic because of pedestrians and, you know, it is a very walkable community, we will not have tenants using that alley. They will park in the parking garage on the front side on High Street, so we're not increasing traffic with vehicles through there. It is purely just the garbage truck. And I do think us paving that 14 feet of the alley will make kind of a delineation and make it clear, possibly safer for pedestrians because they will see where the alley actually is and where to walk. So I think that covered everything. You guys have any questions or?
Angie, can you speak to the phase two or, or, you know?
Yeah, oh, thank you, Dan. That was my other thing, yes. So this site plan, it's actually a separate owner, it's a, the owner's the same separate partnership, so there's other people involved in the next parcel. So per city, to get our plans in and to get a building permit, we had to have a trash enclosure on this site. So we couldn't push it to the future site, so we did have to have it since the site plan is being brought in and the building permit is being asked for, for this site only. We do not know what we have planned yet for the site next door. We explored a couple things and it didn't work out financially, so yes, that is a city requirement that we have a trash enclosure to bring the site plan through, so we can't combine it with the next parcel. Thank you, if that was on my list.
Any other questions? I think it's just noise, I don't think, yeah. All right. All right, are there any questions for staff from the commission?
Just a quick one. Can the city cite, while we're putting this in the, the write-up, can the owner receive a citation if the doors are left open, or is it just, we hope they're always closed?
Well, it'd be an enforcement action through the easement. So the easement would have this requirement, and we could take legal action, because we would still own the land, so we, we would grant an easement with these requirements and we could revoke it, or, I don't know, that it would be a, it's not really like a citation, like breaking a, it's more of a property ownership, a legal battle, not a citation of city code.
But are you, what you're getting at, Carol, maybe if, if the neighbors noticed that there was a violation, they could report it to the city, is that right, Jason?
Right.
And then the city would have to?
Yeah, I probably got a little lost in the weeds on the details of actually how the, the legal part of it. But in, in short, there's a mechanism, the easement would have a mechanism in it where it's, the city can do enforcement in some fashion.
And this one, number four, is just for the easement, and number five actually includes the zero setback, right?
That's correct, that, yeah.
All right, if there aren't any other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask commissioners for their thoughts.
I move staff.
Thank you, Frances. There's a motion to move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Will, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chris, are you on? All right, is that everyone?
Yeah, motion carries for consent.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to number five, which, as Bert said, is related, so he'll go over any details he needs to.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the commission, item five is for the site plan for that property immediately to the south of this right of way. They're wanting to develop a multifamily residential building on that property that would require two design alternatives. One of those being a, an appeal of that setback from that alley right of way. There's a five-foot setback required by the design or planning and design ordinance. They're wanting to build right up to the property line with their dumpster enclosure and that stairwell in the building. And then the second appeal is to allow a garage entrance on a primary street where it's not allowed, and as I'll show you, they're wanting to have an overhead door on the south facade of the building to provide access to the internal parking directly from High Street. Again, the property is located on the north side of High Street, just west of 16th Street. This is a photo of the site taken, I believe, yesterday before the snow. This is looking east down that alley we were just talking about. And then another angle from 16th Street looking southwest across the site. So here's the site plan, I'll zoom in, and I'll have, I'll show you the renderings for the building in a little bit as well. But the first appeal is for a reduction of the required setback from this north property line. The requirement is for five feet, they're wanting to construct this stairwell here right up to the property line and this dumpster enclosure right up to the property line. Then the balance of the building, roughly 75%, would be setback three and a half feet from the property line. Again, the other appeal is to allow this driveway here, High Street is considered a primary frontage. Our design ordinance doesn't allow for overhead garage doors to be located on a primary frontage, so they're needing an appeal of that. As I'll show you in a little bit, the building gets set back 10 feet from that property line, so we do believe that it would be safe for vehicles to pull out. There's about 10 feet before the nose of the car gets to the sidewalk, so that should be enough distance that either pedestrian or the driver can see that coming. I'll just go through the rest of the site plan here quickly. So this is the landscaping plan, they'd just be adding the street trees since the building in the dumpster enclosure would comprise the majority of the site minus this building setback area along 16th and High Street. And then these are the renderings, and this is the High Street facade here on the south, and then this is the 16th Street facade on the east. That overhead door that needs the design alternative is located right here. Again, there's 10 feet of setback between that overhead door and the property line. Let's go through a few more renderings they provided. And I guess this drawing here shows one of the reasons why they needed to put the overhead door on this facade. You can see from the topography that in order to have parking within the first floor of the building, they needed to have the door here, because if they would put it on the north side, then they would need to build a ramp down into the basement, which would reduce the amount of units they could have in the building. This is again on the 16th Street frontage. This is just the entry area at the corner. Here are the building elevations. I can come back to any of these if you need it. This here is the floor plan of the lower level of the building. They're providing 43 parking spaces in the building, that would serve the multifamily building that contains 47 dwelling units, so it's a ratio of about 0.91 parking spaces per dwelling unit. They do have a biking, parking area back here for 11 bikes. Again, the door to the off-street, or indoor parking would be located here at the southwest corner, and there'd be a drive, internal drive, access drive through the building that way. And then if you look up here at the northwest corner, that's where the dumpster enclosure would be. And then this is the first floor, I'll just show you this again, this is that stairwell that bumps up to the property line. So this area up here at the corner is really what needs the design. So this area up here at the corner is really what needs the design alternative to be less than five feet from that property line. I can let the applicant make their case, but you can imagine that by sliding the stairs and this dumpster five feet to the south, one of two things needs to happen. One, they would need to, you know, lose area, possibly hold dwelling units on the first, second, or the upper three floors of the building. Or they would need to slide the entire building to the south, which then reduces the setback along High Street, which, you know, has consequences for having that overhead door access directly from High Street. So we do believe that the setback is appropriate in this instance. And this is the floor plan for the rest of the building and the roof plan. They are screening all of the rooftop mechanicals. So in the staff report, we did recommend approval of the design alternatives subject to compliance with all administrative review comments. Now I'll go through the consent map. We didn't receive any cards, but we did receive that same email that I showed you for item number four that has the concerns with the safety, the people, or the, you know, they have that garage right here that backs out directly onto that alley. And then Nick had a lengthy email dialogue with another neighbor who had some concerns. And I believe this email here summarizes that neighbor's concerns. And I guess that concludes my presentation. Were there any questions for me?
Good question.
Go ahead.
What's the requirement for parking stalls per unit?
They're required to provide one stall per unit. So staff was able to grant an administrative type-one design alternative, which waived four off-street parking spaces.
Okay.
So that already has been approved by staff.
I had the same question. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Bert. And I know the applicant is present. Would you like to come up again?
Welch's on development. So yeah, again, staff's presentation did a good job of covering kind of the reasons why we're at. I guess a couple of things that I'd like to point out. We actually do have 44 stalls in the building, so we're only, a reduction of three stalls is kind of where it ended up. As far as justification or rationale for the entrance in the southwest corner, just kind of reiterate a couple of things. The alley sits about 11 feet higher than High Street does elevation-wise. So again, as we were looking at this site and this building and finding a way to most efficiently access the building, that entrance on High Street really, really was the most efficient way to do that, both from number of units and safety coming out. You can imagine if we did have a ramp to exit to the alley, then as you exited the building, you'd be, you'd be coming up a ramp and then trying to look left and right to see what traffic in the alley. And that also, that adds traffic to the alley, which we're trying to avoid. As far as why it's in the southwest corner of the building, our goal was to move that, that access point as far away from the intersection of 16th Street as possible, again, to provide that, that kind of safe egress and ingress from the building and give plenty of room for a pedestrian on the sidewalk to see a car coming out and a car to see pedestrians. See, as far as the reduced setback on the north side, again, with the, with the alley being there and the stair tower, you know, a lot of that, that stair tower location is really driven by building code criteria for ingress and egress from the building. The other stair tower is in the southeast corner of the building, kind of right, you come in that lobby space. So this stair tower needed to be back on that north side. And then in that northwest corner puts it at the other end of the corridor that's in the building there. And likewise too, we've pushed that stair tower to the west side. So as, if you are driving in the alley and you get to the, it'd be the northeast corner of the building, you have as much space as we can because we're at the setback on that corner. So we keep that visibility as you, if you're exiting the alley to 16th Street. We've maximized that amount of visibility that's there to make that, that as safe as possible with the building being there. The east side of the building is built up to the setback line, so we're code compliant there. Same thing on the west side of the building. Again, with the parking, we, there are bike racks provided outside of the building plus bike racks in the building for the tenants to kind of accommodate those three stalls that were short. We know that, that not every, every tenant will need a car or want to have a car, being this close to downtown and some other, other things. And we think that's in line with the, kind of the, the goals of encouraging walkability and providing that for people who are looking for that. Happy to answer any, any questions if there are any?
Hi. Is there anything to slow the traffic down when they're coming out of the garage? Are they coming up or are they coming down?
No.
Is there a speed hump?
Yeah, that's a good question. They aren't coming up or down. It's kind of at the same elevation. The garage, the internal garage floor is flat.
Okay.
As far as speed though, they, I don't have the, maybe it's in here. Yeah, I forgot. Is it up or down? Down, okay. As you are exiting that, that ramp, so the exit is here and there's parking here, so you'll be making a 90-degree turn when you come around to exit the building. So I think that you'll be going slow because you've just made that, that turn to get to the door. And then as, as was mentioned, the sidewalk is about 10 feet away from the building.
What about bicyclists? You'll be able to see the pedestrians maybe then? Is there enough view clearance to see a bicyclist that maybe will be moving faster than a pedestrian?
Yes, sure. Let me see if I can get back, back to that. One of the things that is in there is we do have, it's kind of in this purple here. There's a vision triangle that's allowed, so there's no landscaping in there. So as you're bringing your car out of the garage, you'll be able to kind of see to your left and right. There's no landscaping or other obstructions allowed to make that as, again, as, as safe as possible.
Okay, speaking of bikes, the bike location that you have in the garage, is it secure or is it open for anyone?
Maybe it's a secured location.
So you'd have like a key code or something for people that want to park their bike in there?
Yeah, I don't know that we, I guess I don't know the exact mechanism, but I know the developer that we're working with has, owns multiple and operates multiple units and has addressed that as a, as a concern that he's had from previous tenants and wants to make sure.
So that if you park your bike there, it's like secure?
Yes.
Yeah, that, I appreciate the fact that you're accommodating bikes, but yeah, you want to make sure it'll be there when you come down in the morning to ride it.
Correct, yep.
Is the parking an additional fee or is it included in the rental?
I would have to clarify that. I believe it's on a lease basis. I would imagine it's additional fee, but we can probably get you an answer to that yet.
What do you, he didn't know? I didn't hear what he said.
Yeah, additional fee.
Additional charge?
Yep.
Okay. Can non-residents use it? Like could someone pay 150 bucks and park in there if they wanted to?
Angie Tomcu again. No, non-residents cannot use it. You'd have a key card to enter.
Okay.
So that's the only way you get in the garage is with your key card. So also with the bikes, that's an additional layer of security, but they will be lockable inside the garage as well.
Okay, thanks. And do you have any affordable units? Because I understand you're getting city funds for this project?
We do, yes. So we have workforce housing tax credits through the state and then we also have a development agreement with the city. So we have 10% of our units as affordable and one of them is a two-bedroom unit per council's request.
Okay, at the 80%? 60% AMI?
Probably 65.
65% AMI?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I got one more for you, Mike.
Chief Book.
Is, is parallel parking on 16th Street feasible or there?
Yeah, it is, it is there. It's hard to see because we kind of, we're showing it in the, in the dark hatch area. We're showing, we're adding parallel parking. We're extending the curb returns at the intersection, pretty similar to what's across the street currently on, on the Big Grove side. And I want to say we have four stalls in this, in this phase. We're showing additional parking for the, for the future. It won't be built right now because we still don't know what's happening on that site.
Okay.
But forgetting that driveway located and seeing what that looked like.
And on the sloping street on 16th, is that also parallel parked or is it not really possible in that?
I think you can park on the east side of the street.
Yeah, east side, yep. Yeah, we've, we have no parking on the west side.
Yep, and that's how it is today.
Makes sense, thanks.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Please state your name, address, sign in, and you have five minutes.
Hi there, I'm Delonis. I live at 1614 Woodland, just north of the building that we're talking about right now and just to the, yeah, just to the west it would be of the property of the owner that was just speaking. I just wanted to share my post-opposition to the bullet A. Bullet B we're, we're comfortable with. I mean, that's real, and bullet A is the one with the setback of the five feet. And this really gets to the width of the alley and that high-traffic alley. We've got Carl's Place there, we've got Big Grove, we've got Hoyt Sherman that have shows and there's a lot of traffic that's happening there. The width of that alley, what we are, will be, well, it will be being paved, as you can see in these pictures. The measurements that I did are, it's currently, people are driving much wider than what will be paved. And so it's going to be very tight. There's going to be people walking and I think there's public safety issues there that we need to be thoughtful of. I'm also concerned about, as you can see, our property here is on the left. There's going to be people driving into our property there. There's going to be the building, because there's no setback, it's going to be very tight on this, on the south side. And so I want to be very thoughtful about the property that we do own and the setbacks that we've met and be, be fair about that. This is a brand-new property, as you can see. This is a completely empty lot. This is brand-new construction. I don't understand why there, we weren't able to come up with a design that could meet specs and meet the city code. We've got plenty of opportunity to do whatever we, whatever the applicant would like to do here. And cutting into and breaking city code to meet, to force this easement doesn't necessarily make sense to me. And so I wanted to make sure that I share that with this group and make sure you're all aware of our, our concerns as property owners of this high-traffic alley and the kind of the width not meeting, not probably being where we need it to be. One thing I guess I'll throw out is the research that I was doing within the, the guidelines within the city wasn't incredibly clear on the expected width of alleys within the city, but some of what I found was that 20 feet is what is expected for two-way alleys. I'm not sure that was extremely clear to me, but even what we've talked about today is less than that. I think it's 16 feet. I hear, I've seen different things in writing. Honestly, it's between 13 and 16 feet. That's not the 20 feet for the two-way. And then we are also talking about having this property completely against the alleyway, which is going to make it feel even tighter. And so I think that puts some risk at people who are walking and different pedestrians who are trying to make their way through the high-traffic alley. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it and thank you for considering it.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak against this item?
Hello again, Angela Broughton-Romine from the Sherman Health Association. We also oppose item 5A for the reasons discussed. I would point out that this concern about the width also goes back to item number four. I mean, them asking for variance on the setback makes the problem with the gates that much worse. I do think this is an area of high traffic and as Phil pointed out, it's wide open. There's all kinds of opportunity to design in compliance with the ordinance. Staff noted that one reason for requesting an exception to the variance is you have more space to develop or make money. That's, for me, not a good argument because there are all kinds of good reasons why we have setbacks. And there's every opportunity here to design something around the setback. I would also point out that there was some discussion about credits that were applied for, you know, we have had some good discussions with this owner. We wrote a letter of support for the project. But I would note that the project substantially changed since our letter of support and it's unfortunate we haven't had a lot of detailed discussions about these items. But as I say, we do oppose item 5A. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak on this item? And the applicant does have five minutes for rebuttal if you want to address any, anything that was said.
Angie Tomcu again. I don't have much. I just, the site does appear large and wide open, but we have easements under there, utilities under there. We have stormwater detention that is a requirement that we had to fit on the site. So we did work really hard to stay within our footprint as much as we can. And all of our actual building footings, foundations and all that are on our site. They're not in any of these easements. And then also, just one more thing, we're asking for the zero, we're asking for the full five feet just by that dumpster and the stairwell. Everything else, we are allowing three and a half feet. So we're not taking zero all the way across. It's just in that corner. So I get it is still part of 5A, but we're not zero all the way across. There's still three and a half feet. So it will feel better through there. And the 14 feet that we've agreed to pave, that's a discussion we have with the city so that utilities can connect in and we're not in neighboring properties as we're paving that. So that's kind of where we came up with. And currently, the paving varies from nine to 11 feet in that alley, what we can determine as paving anyway in the alley. So that's all. I appreciate all the comments. If there's any questions?
Has there been dialogue discussion about whether it is a one-way or two-way alley?
I have no idea.
The alley's two-way.
And what width is required for that?
The alley functions as two-way, but as the gentleman alluded to, our code does say a two-way alley needs to be at least 20 feet wide. But I don't know that I've ever seen any alleys less than 20 feet be signed as one-way.
Yeah, and I think that the other thing, Bert, to note is that this is an existing alley. Alleys historically were 16 feet wide. That standard is really there to facilitate if we had new development that wanted to have alleys to plan ahead. But we're not going to use that to go in alleys across town. Most alleys in the city are only 16 feet wide.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, a lot more even is 14 feet.
Yeah.
So we're going to pave this one 14 feet in the parcel dimension of the alleys, 16?
Yes, yeah, it's.
Across the right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you.
Are there questions for Bert? Well, he's up. Maybe it goes without saying, but that, does that 14 feet, is that centered on the alley or is it shifted towards the south?
I don't know that we have a requirement for that, but I don't know if, Angie, do you know if it's centered with Mike?
I guess I would imagine maybe it's shifted to the south so you could get those dumpsters out.
Yeah, it is shifted to the south and part of it is to just allow for that between the edge of the paving and the property line on the north to give us some room to get those grades tied in without having to grade onto the property to the north. If that makes sense.
I have a question for staff. Did our traffic and transportation department provide any feedback that was concerning regarding?
They were not concerned with it, no. And we ran the dumpster enclosure swings past them too and they weren't concerned with the conditions that we recommended it is.
If, I, I sense that one of the concerns is this is used as a cut-through and will use, be used more as a cut-through if it's paved. So I would think you'd want to have it narrower and so that people would go slower versus wider and people going faster and make it less encouraging for people to go through. Is there an opportunity for speed humps, maybe to discourage through traffic?
Yeah, the neighbors could request that through the city's traffic and transportation division if that's something that
Okay.
they would entertain.
Yeah, I would think building up near it will make it feel smaller and will encourage people to Yeah, I would think building up near it will make it feel smaller and will encourage people to go slower. It's traffic basics.
And as mentioned, the residents of this building would, I mean, it's not to say they would never use the alley, but as a general rule of thumb, if they park along High Street or in the building, they'll be coming from the south more than cutting through.
But it sounds like it's the Hoyt Sherman traffic and Big Grove traffic and all those other folks that are in a hurry.
Yeah, right now, as you can see in those site photos, there were cars parking on the alley. And our assumption is that a lot of those cars are from Big Grove customers. So once there's a building there, that won't be possible.
Quick question. So it's human nature for us to take the easiest path into a building. Is there any access points in that rear? Because my only worry is we're allowing for this easement, but human behavior will allow people to park there and run lamps up for groceries. And if we're going to prove this, I just want to make sure that I can purposely see that the behavior is not going to change.
Yeah, yeah.
Or how are they preventing that from someone just doing a quick stop, running upstairs and grab something? Because I want that alleyway to remain clear.
Yeah, it looks like.
Definitely for their approvals that we're making.
There is at least one, maybe, maybe just one emergency exit off the north. And I would guess, I don't know if it was pointed out, but the dumpster enclosure has a pedestrian door here on the west side. So people might go out this door to walk around and throw their garbage away.
Can you, there's a back staircase? Can you explain that? Is it like a spiral or is it?
No, it's just an emergency egress.
Yeah, but, yeah. But it's over there by the dumpster, and the door faces east.
Yeah, okay, there is a door there.
And that's mainly more of an emergency staircase or?
I would assume the main entrance for the building is at the southwest, southeast corner of the building.
My, I just, the behavior part, if it's labeled emergency and it's typically going just to catch dust, that's great. But if it's going to constantly be used, I'm worried people are going to park there and then it's going to lead to their, that alleyway being blocked.
Yep, I understand that. That, so those, both of those stairwells there are purely for egress and code-based. We're going to try to keep everybody in the front of the building. Where those are just going to be concrete steps, nothing fancy, not an area you're going to want to be in very often, only as an emergency to get out if there should be an issue in the building. That, we'll have a key card on it. I don't anticipate a lot of people are going to be in that back alley using that. So we, and that's something we can direct the tenants to, that, hey, the front of the building is where you need to enter and exit and, you know, do all your things, whether it's running groceries up or doing whatever. But we will try to keep them out of there. And it is just a path to get out more than, more than anything. We would love to have not had that stairwell. So I don't think the tenants are going to use it much.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions while we have Bert up? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. What do people think?
I would just offer that the, I'm all for advocating to, especially when blank sites and things like that, meet the intent of the code, meet the code, work within that, like the neighborhood's kind of requested. However, in these circumstances, it seems like the solutions that are offered are workable, feasible. You know, this section of the city, or this particular zoning district has a setback on the alley, but many don't. And they work fine, and the cars go through, and gates like this swing and aren't required to be locked. The East Village has lots of them, and it works fine. They've been built new, you know, all these things have happened. So I wouldn't say it's not that these conditions aren't present in the city. They're just not in this zoning district. And I think this zoning district is set up this way probably to more reflect the context that it's in. Maybe, I don't know, speculating a little bit. So anyway, I think the functional requirements, as the city's staff has described, you know, the cars are going to be able to back out, cars are going to be able to move through the alleys. I think generally speaking to, you know, we should be driving car traffic to alleys and pedestrian traffic to sidewalks. So trying to provide for pedestrians to be safe in alleys, we don't want them going there. We want the cars there. So we need to kind of let this play out, and I think that they're doing it okay. The door to High Street, the overhead door to High Street, isn't like the best for that condition, but for this site, I think it's a reasonable solution. It would have, it would pretty drastically impact their pro forma, their project here if they were trying to get a ramp to, you know, exceed the slope of High, of 16th Street to get down to a basement parking or something from the alley. So with that all said, hopefully my comments kind of address how we could think about this from the public perspective. I move staff that, for these reasons.
Thanks, Dan. I agree with everything you said. There's a motion to move staff. All in favor, please raise your hand. And Will, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Chris, are you on? I'm going to safely say Chris is not attending, so. All right.
Motion carries 14-0.
Thank you. Item number six, I also already read, and Shrosh is going to be presenting for the city.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sreya Chakravarti Planning Staff. I'll be presenting item number six, which is a rezoning request for a property at 4415 Hubble Avenue. The specific rezoning request is to change the use of the property to allow an auto body shop, which falls within the vehicle sales and service and maintenance major use category. And so a rezoning is required from MX3 to CX to be able to allow the proposed use. So this is the subject property. It's on Hubble Avenue, kind of northeast side of town. You can see the corridor, Hubble Avenue corridor, is a mix of higher-intensity commercial uses. A lot of the properties in the general vicinity are zoned MX3. There's a variety of retail, commercial, office, warehouse-type uses in the general area. The subject property is just to the north of low-density residential. So just to the south, you can see there's one and two family residential developments. So that's just to give you a context. This is the existing building. The existing building has a commercial use with some accessory storage. There's a parking lot to the front. There's a big row of trees, as you can see, behind it that separates it from the residential area, kind of provides a buffer from the residential area to the south. This is looking to the, to the west. So again, just to give you an idea about the general corridor and the uses along it. And this is looking east. So this is a very conceptual site sketch that was provided by the applicant. What they're proposing here is a use of the building for an auto body shop to do fender-type work. There's also a proposal for a paint booth inside the building, potentially some parking spaces in the back for cars that are waiting for repair work and so on. But that's not, that's not finalized. It's just a proposal that the applicant thinks could happen. Outside of that, there's no other changes to the building from outside in terms of changing any openings and that kind of thing. There's parking to the front, the existing parking to the front, as you saw. So that is just a very conceptual sketch of potentially what could happen on the site. So staff has reviewed this request. The land use designation, the future land use designation for this area and generally the corridor is community mixed-use, which is small-to-medium-scale mixed-use development located on major corridors, transit corridors, or at major intersections and so on. I would like to point out that I made a correction here in the staff report that was provided to you. The definition right here was that of neighborhood mixed-use. So that has been updated to community mixed-use. I just wanted to note that. So the proposed rezoning to CX District confirms to the, the future land use designation of community mixed-use. So staff believes that this proposed zoning district and the use would be consistent with the land use designation. It would also be consistent generally with the character of the Hubble Avenue corridor as well as general uses in the vicinity. So with that, staff is supportive of this request. I will note that once the rezoning goes through, the applicant will be required to do site improvements based on an approved site plan. So all of those will, all of those steps will have to be met. Additionally, for any, any such use within the CX District, some supplemental regulations apply. And those supplemental regulations are listed right here, if you can see my cursor. So that addresses some of the issues of outdoor storage, parking, long-term storage, outdoor storage of junk debris, and also that all repairs and so on are to be done inside the building. So those supplemental regulations apply to this particular use in the CX District. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, as is required through the rezoning process. I believe it was scheduled on January 11th. None of the neighbors were in attendance. So neither was any written comment submitted. We did receive a comment card back, and I'll just zoom in so you can, you can read the concern. This is from the property owner who's directly to the west and south of the subject property and has some concerns with the rezoning and is not in support of it. So I'll let you read that. And, and this is the, this is the consent map. And as you can see here, this is the comment card that we received from the property owner who is directly south and west to the subject property. Still with that, this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Will Page here. I do have a question. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead, Will.
Okay, thanks a lot. I am looking at these requirements, the supplemental use regulations, and I count one, two, three, four, five, six. And all of these regulations are excellent, and there are a lot of them. You know, we have a problem in Des Moines in repair shops that don't maintain their property. I could cite chapter and verse, okay? And my concern is that once these properties are zoned and developed, oftentimes, unfortunately, we have bad luck, and we end up with very unsightly properties. And as I say, I could cite one property at Sixth Avenue and up on the north side of town in Seneca. And I know our councilperson has been working for at least the last six years to get this property back into a slightly conditioned, and nothing has happened, six years. So my real concern about this is, in addition to the parking in the back, which would be an invitation for, you know, inappropriate use, my real question has to do with enforcement. A lot of regulations here. And, you know, the city is stressed for enforcement. And once something goes wrong, it's very hard to make it right again. So I guess my question is, what kind of confidence do you have that if something does go wrong on this property, that enforcement actually is going to be applied and successful?
The enforcement is always a tricky situation. And some of it can be muddy because you're dealing with a site that maybe has legal non-conforming status. Maybe, maybe you're, may or may not have a site plan on record just because of how long the property has been occupied, you know, with grandfather rights. I do think as far as comparing a situation like that, that has, that's been there for a long time and has non-conforming rights to a new use, which will have to do a site plan that meets current standards for landscaping and screening, I do think it's a better situation. But I don't, I don't think we can predict what may or may not occur from an enforcement perspective and whether or not we would be successful in nipping at any bad behavior in the butt. So I don't know if that helps answer your question, Will, or not, but that's, that's my best stab at it.
No, Jason and I have the same concerns regarding the enforcement too. In northwest Des Moines, there are two repair shops that, when you go down and look at the standards, they, it's not enforced. I've seen, and one was a change of ownership in the last few years. So I know that one is not grandfathered in. But to whether they're grandfathered in or not, I think it's, to grant these without its strong enforcement, I think is doing a misservice to our community and what we want the appearance is. And I think there needs to be stronger enforcement. The perfect example is 72 Hours. I've gone, because I drive past them several times a day, I can see the same cars more than three days. I see more than three cars outside per bay. I've seen one of them is actually taking engines out of the outside with a hoist and doing repair work, which is not allowed. So I think we need to be stricter on this, and we shouldn't be loosey-goosey about granting these requests, especially when people, they come here and say a lot of things. Some of it's honest, some of it's not, maybe halfway honest, and some of it's really deceptive. So I think we need to be stronger looking at this. And I agree with Will in that. We need stronger enforcement.
Go proceed.
Just for clarity, the next step on this parcel, if this is granted, then they will be going through a site plan approval? Thank you.
We may want to mention that when you go from a commercial office use to a body shop, it's a change of use, that may be very difficult for a building like this. Just FYI. But I agree with everything Will and Francis have.
Thank you.
Do you want to explain why?
Nope, they can figure it out.
Are there any other questions before we ask the applicant to come up? Wally, great to see you. Welcome to 2023. I think you know the rules. Name, add in.
I do. Wally Pelz, Pelz Design Services, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa 50316. I'm here instead of Daniel Wilrick, who you've met. He is supposed to present this, so I apologize for a site plan that was drawn by an architect. A civil engineer would have done better. With that, it's a conceptual plan. We're asking for a rezon strictly for a paint booth. And I understand the sentiment. I, our office is on 2323 Dixon. I drive Hubble all the time. I know exactly what you're talking about. If you, if you guys want to jump in my truck with your enforcement officer, we'll go out and point everyone out who is in non-compliance. However, I represent a client who's been operating, and we're looking to add a paint booth internal to the building. That is what's triggering it. We've done it per code. We're following the rules. Our architectural team came. Our architectural team came to the city and said, hey, we want to do a paint booth in this building. And it triggered a zoning change, which made it complicated. So that's our first step that why we're here before we do anything else. We're here to do a zoning change so we can be compliant. The MX3, as you know, if you remember, we went through that whole ordeal with Porter Hardware with, it just doesn't kind of fit. It's kind of a goofy, the overlay that was done there, I don't know, it was, I don't know how staff would have figured it out because there's a hodgepodge of everything along Hubble, right? So I think we're going to have to deal with these things as they come up. That's what we're asking for. Literally, there's no change to the outside of the building. Potentially, we would have some more storage in the rear. The idea is we're looking to put a paint booth in the building, and that's what triggered it, and that's why we're here for a zoning change. If you would have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer it at this time.
What you just stated is opposite, I'm sorry.
You go ahead, please.
Yeah, the report says it's, it's being used as commercial office use, and you want to go to repair use. Are you saying it's already being used as repair?
No, our client has owned it for six years or so. It's been purchased on contract, is that correct, Tom?
It's currently occupied as.
Oh, yeah, you have to come up to the microphone and state your name and address and then sign in.
My name is Tom Hudson, 6365 Northeast Eighth Court in Des Moines. I represent the buyer of the property. The property, as we understand, most recently had been used, is leased out to two tenants. One half of the building was occupied for some time as a church, is now vacant. The other part of the building was occupied by a painting contractor who's been there for, I think, in excess of 15 years. So there, there is no commercial office space there. That, that would be, the reference there in that paragraph is incorrect.
I actually think it's listed that way in the assessors page, if I remember from looking it up from the assessors. It's listed as commercial.
So the existing tenants will leave, and it's going to go to a new business?
Yes, so the existing tenants would leave and they would, it would become a new business.
Are you LDS Enterprises?
I am not.
Are you?
Neither am I. I represent the buyer.
Does LDS Enterprises have any experience with vehicle auto repair and painting?
Have no idea.
That is the current owner, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that, they, the, the current owner has to sign on to the application because any zoning conditions would have to be accepted by the current owner. So that's why our agenda is based off of the current ownership.
Then do you have any experience, or your, your buyer have any experience with running motor vehicle repair and painting shop?
They have experience professionally running a painting operation. They're not into vehicle repair of engines and mufflers and fenders and whatever. They're doing a vehicle painting, touch-up, that type of thing. All, all contained within the confines of the building.
Okay. There can be serious environmental concerns with paint booths?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, but those aren't part of the sick, you know, the, the six requirements for this, or however many there were. Are there requirements for paint booths that need to be met?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
That are, that can be cited, like these other ones that he says he's not going to have anything to do with anyway?
Yeah, that, that would actually be under the building code. That's, there's, so there's fire code for paint booths, there's also environmental, and that all comes under the building code. Zoning is not an enforcement vehicle for that. That's a building code issue.
Okay, real quick, just to clarify. The current owner is selling it to the person that wants to establish a business that paints vehicles.
Correct.
All right, are there other questions?
Does the current owner occupy the building right now? Is he the paint establishment, the painting establishment?
The current owner is LDS.
LDS, okay.
And the, the current owner is the seller. My client is the buyer, who is going to install a paint booth that is the most recent technology available, which complies with all of those environmental concerns that have been referenced.
Just to clarify, though, there was two existing tenants, I think is what's being spoken to. There's a church and.
There had been a church in the eastern half of the building. The western half of the building has been occupied by a painting contractor for in excess of 15 years.
Like a building painting?
Yes, different type.
Commercial painter. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
You're good. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed or neutral? Are there any further questions from the commission? Any comments?
I guess I have one question. Can you pull up the, the future layout for the parking in the back? And then.
And just to clarify, this is a rudimentary concept. This is not a site plan submittal. So we've done no analysis on this as far as like, do the setbacks comply with anything? There's no landscaping shown or anything like that?
And then are there garages on the front of that building?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Were there garages on the front of the building? Can you pull?
Oh, overhead doors?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Down the side. Yeah, that was it.
Can I speak on that?
And then, absolutely. And at this phase, they don't have to submit layout. We're just approving.
No, yeah, this is purely just a question of use. So we're not looking at their building modifications or site plan or any of that stuff. It's just a question of, does this use make sense here? Is it appropriate? Does it conform with the future land use plan? Those types of questions.
Drive-in door there on the, on the right side of the photograph. So there is a, there is a vehicular bay there.
All right, if there are any other questions, I'll close the public hearing. And does everyone think?
Madam Chair, it's, it's Will Page here. There was a very interesting conversation about how the property, the ownership of the property, the use of the property, the function of the property, a very complex situation. None of this bodes well for me in terms of how one could control or enforce this kind of auto repair business. I'm really concerned about that for the reasons that people have already voiced on the commission. So I move to deny the request, the application.
All right, thank you, Will. There is a motion to, I guess, would it be just oppose staff?
No, yeah, it's denial of the request to.
To deny the request? Or to rezone? One quick question. Because of the ownership structure, how confusing it is, and then the other reasons stated. If you want to repeat it, Will, the reasoning?
The reasoning is that it's inappropriate for Hubble Avenue as a, as a business.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor to deny the request. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And all opposed, please raise your right hand. And abstentions? Oh, you have to vote. If you talked out, if you talked on the subject, you must vote. To deny the request. So you want to approve it? Okay, so you vote.
You vote, you vote. So, yeah, you, yeah, you vote, you're voting no against the motion. So it's a tie, seven, seven fails.
Oh, you can speak.
For staff, so it's pretty typical when purchases are, purchases of land, that they will come and see if they can get approval, and then that contract will go through of the purchase. That, that's, that's typical. That's actually pretty normal. So that, the ownership confusion doesn't bother me. Staff, I guess my question is, is this typical for Hubble Avenue? Do we see any other repairs, well, not repair shops, but painting booths? Because I know last year, we are, we saw a zoning change, and I know two businesses that are doing similar work were forced out of their spaces over on the east side. So these spots of availability to be able to do a business like this is kind of shrinking. So, yeah.
So just, I mean, I think that Hubble Avenue has a variety of uses on it. I think that's a fair, I, I, we, I hate to like, say, yeah, there's this use or similar uses without really looking. I mean, I just know from living here for a long time that, you know, there are quite a mix of uses on Hubble. Right now, we have no recommendation because the motion failed. You know, the one thing that occurred to me as we spoke is that if there, if the concern, if there is interest in the, the specific use that the applicants described here tonight, we could add a zoning condition that limits it to indoor paint, you know, auto body paint use that occurs, you know, in the building. If you have concerns about development behind the building, we could have a zoning condition that prohibits development in the rear yard. Those might help you, you know, maybe that's a middle ground that would get you towards a, a motion of recommending approval. But certainly, I mean, the item can carry on, too, with no recommendation, I believe. We can look into that really quick.
I'd be willing to do a motion to approve staff with those extra conditions, if that would be something people would be open to. I'm seeing some head shake.
I think we've had a motion, and it's been denied because of a 7-7 vote. I would defer to legal. We can take any action, the legal opinion about that on this matter. I think the matter's closed, but I defer to attorney.
Hey, I don't even want to.
I think because of the way that, do you want to?
Yes, please.
Gary Guidelock, Assistant City Attorney. I, I think because of the way that motion was phrased, as a denial of the motion, and that motion to deny failed, I believe that a motion, another motion would still be viable here. I don't think that that closes the matter because, in other words, if the, if the motion had been to approve and that failed, I think that that would, that would settle that matter. But I think because it was a motion to deny, and I mean, it was a tie, too, so we've got to take that into consideration as well. I think, I think that it's still open.
Thank you, Gary. So I will make the motion to approve staff with the recommendations that Jason added, if he wants to repeat them very quickly.
Yeah, use to be restricted to auto body painting to occur within the building, along with the prohibition of any outdoor storage, pavement, or parking within the rear yard.
So that is the motion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
Uh, no.
Thank you, Will.
The motion carries. What was the final vote? Yeah, nine and five. You have, and you have the names, or do we need people to raise, do their hands again? Okay, we have it on video. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Moving on to public hearing item number seven, the request from 2513 Woodland, represented by Steve Wilkie Shapiro, for the following property at 2513 Woodland Ave., A through C. And Bert will be presenting for the city.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Item number seven is a request to rezone a small property at, located at 2513 Woodland Avenue from N5 Neighborhood District to RX1 Mixed Use District. And it would allow for renovation of a small existing structure for use as a professional office. The subject property is located on the north side of Woodland Avenue, mid-block between 25th Street and 26th Street. As you'll see shortly, this, there's a small commercial building that is here. It was deemed a public nuisance by the city a few years ago after it sat vacant. The applicant tonight has taken ownership of the property from Polk County and is wanting to use it for a architectural office. Just a couple more photos. And then they're wanting to renovate the structure. So here's their design, and I'll let them go through it in greater detail in their presentation. And then I'll also skip this. This is some narrative that the applicant provided with their application. Staff does believe that it would be appropriate to rezone this small property to RX1. We have recommended a couple of conditions that are intended to ensure that it doesn't become burdensome for the neighbors. The, as you'll see, our first condition is that we recommended any use of the property be limited to any use as permitted and limited in the N5 District, which it is today, plus an office, which is business or professional use per city code section 134 dash five point, I'm sorry, 3.5 point 13A. Again, this is a pretty strict condition. It pretty much says it can only be used for a residential use or for a professional office. And then the second condition we're recommending is that any renovation of the structure be in accordance with the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation of historic buildings. You know, this is kind of a unique situation. We don't normally see a small commercial building, you know, constructed these days in a neighborhood like this, but historically that was fairly common. So we have scanned through our Plan DSM, Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and we feel that this rezoning does satisfy quite a few of the goals in the plan. They're provided in the staff report, so I won't read through all of them, but we do, like, one of them is recognize the value of the historic, existing historic building stock and landscaping. We feel that it's vital, not vital, but it's important to preserve buildings like this. So I guess, then I'll go through the emails that we received. We did receive one email in opposition, and we received one comment card that was in neutrality. But overall, the rest of the emails that we received are all in support. And I'll probably come back to this one later. This is the email that is in opposition. It's fairly lengthy, so I'll leave it up here for a little bit. Like I said, I'll come back to that. So the rest of the emails that we received are in support.
Bert, are these all the emails that you received?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we received like eight or nine in support, yeah. I think we received like eight or nine in support, yeah. Let me know if I'm going through them too quickly.
You said eight or nine in support of it, right?
Yeah.
Did you get any non-support?
Just that one email. Yeah, I'll come back to that one at the end. But the rest of the emails were in support. We did get one comment card that just said they're in neither support or opposition. But the rest of the comment cards we received were all in support. I think this is the last email. And then these are the comment cards. So this one, you said they were undecided. And this is the property that's immediately to the west.
Can you go back to that undecided just for ten seconds?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so here's the comment, or the consent map. So the one card that was undecided is immediately to the west.
Hey, Bert.
Yeah?
How come this project, this item, is not on the consent agenda?
Just because we did receive that email in opposition. So we wanted to give them a chance to have their voice heard. So I'll go back to that email, just to leave it up here since they did spend a lot of time. Any other questions for me?
Just to clarify, the driveway and garage right next to it are not part of the property?
That's correct. That's on the property immediately to the east. Yes, again, this is that email that's in opposition. Any other questions for me?
Thanks, Bert. Is the applicant present? Please come up and state your name, address. Sign in when you're finished, and you have 10 minutes.
My name is Steve Wilkie Shapiro. I represent Sequel Architecture, the potential tenant, and 2513 Woodland LLC, the actual owner.
If you want Bert to show a different screen, they can have.
That one? Okay, got it. Thanks, Gary. I'm just waiting. So Chair and Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to present this project. Again, my name is Steve Wilkie Shapiro. I'm currently operating Sequel Architecture at a location on Ingersoll Avenue, super close to the Woodland property. And I launched Sequel Architecture about two and a half years ago. Celebrated our two-year anniversary in August. And we're currently at four people, including myself, plus one full-time employee and two remote part-time employees. In the interest of time, I'm going to kind of go quick, and then I'll answer any questions you have. So for the past year or so, I've been searching pretty diligently for what I'd call our forever home. And when the city issued the RFP for this particular property, we were super excited to find a place where we could live what we do. It's a, and I'll talk a little bit about this in a future slide, but it's located in a National Register Historic District, although it's not considered a contributing building due to the alterations. And our intent, and you can tell that it needs a lot of work, our intent is to do a historic rehabilitation utilizing historic tax credits as well. So in our initial research, we've done, we've, just a couple days ago, submitted an application to consider for the building to be considered a local landmark. And in our initial research, what we found is that the building is almost 110 years old. It was constructed originally as a grocery store called Grief Grocery, and then sold very soon after to the Paul Landis, the guy you see at the back of the photo here. And operated as a grocery until the mid-1960s, when Paul Landis passed away, and it stood vacant for several years until it was purchased by a person named Harlan Thomas and his brother. And the two of them opened a barber shop that lasted another 30 to 40 years, depending on sort of anecdotal evidence. I found, as we were cleaning it out, found publications from the early 2000s stacked in the building. So I assume it was occupied until then, at which point anecdotal evidence again suggests that Harlan Thomas abandoned the building in the face of mounting maintenance costs. And it stood vacant then for probably about 10, 12 years. So this was the interior condition at the time I purchased, or the time the city deeded the building to me. And we have since cleaned the building out to something, basically cleaned out all of the finishes back to a configuration more like it was originally when it was constructed as a grocery store, likely one large open space. So a small architecture office is a low-impact use. We will have, as you can see here, there's really no more space for anything more than about four people there, with plenty of street parking available. And I can commute, bike commute from just a few blocks away. So when it's all said and done, the intent is that I'll be investing about $140,000 in the project in accordance with the Secretary of Standards for Historic Rehabilitation, which is one of the proposed conditions. So I'm fully behind that, obviously. I have proactively engaged with both the adjacent property owners and the neighborhood association. And the overwhelming majority of people who I've talked to, with the exception of the one person who submitted the letter, have been extremely supportive of this vision. At the required public meeting, there were three people, three adults plus two children that showed up. And we had a great discussion about parking along Woodland and came to a couple conclusions. One, that there is, that there's enough parking on the street to serve this small use, and that we would be parking kind of opposite when residents are there. So during the day, we will be parking. In the evening, we're going to leave. And that's when residents tend to park on the street there. Additionally, it's a snow route, and so the intent would be that we park around the adjacent side streets on those occasions when it snows and the snow ordinance goes into effect. So I fully support the staff analysis recommending the use restrictions. And assuming a successful landmark designation would also provide additional assurance that the building will serve a public benefit for a long time to come. So I do think, based on, just to kind of talk about some of those public benefits. First of all, it was constructed as a grocery store over 100 years ago, renovated to a barber shop. And so it has a past history of being a commercial building. Second, obviously, would be the historic context that the building itself tells the story of micro-commerce in the developing streetcar suburbs. But then it's also associated with what I would call the low but critically important story to tell, which is the displacement of primarily black residents from the Center Street District to the east in Sherman Hill during the urban renewal era. And it was during this time that it converted to the barber shop and became a community hub. And Harlan Thomas was himself a regionally-known blues artist. And so there's a strong story to tell with this building. And the third reason is historic preservation itself, that a historic rehabilitation, historic rehabilitation has been demonstrated to increase property values and encourage neighborhood stability. So those are the three sort of justifications for the public good associated with rezoning this property. So that's it. Appreciate your time. Does anybody have any questions before I sit?
I have two for you. Two questions.
Yes.
You have 103 projects under your belt in two and a half years.
Pardon?
You have 103 projects under your belt in two and a half years.
They are not all large.
I assume.
It ranges from like historic porch reconstruction all the way through our largest project, which is the historic renovation of the Ingersoll Theater.
Yeah. I think to that point, how many of those serve the urban neighborhoods of Des Moines? Like 75%?
About, I would say 75% wouldn't be a terrible estimate of the like historic renovation.
That's awesome.
Residential-related projects.
That's awesome. I mean, the previous commercial use served the community. So do you. It's awesome. Maybe that can be part of the story, and why you should be.
That can be part of the story, too.
Why it should happen. That's great. And what are you going to do with the barber chairs?
One of them will be restored and kept on site.
Yes.
The other two, I am trying to find a home for. Talking with a couple stylists who may be interested.
Nice. That's great. Thanks, Steve. Great project. Awesome idea.
Any other questions?
I'll take your business card. I know some black barbers that may be interested. And it'd be really cool to have those be established in those new homes. My second one, I think this is awesome. I love the history. I hope you, I would love to see, and this is your business, do what you want, but I'd love to see a plaque or some way you can tell that story. Yeah, this supports walkability. It's right down the street. I think there will be enough parking based off of how many employees you have, if folks work remotely. I just texted my dad. So his side of the family are Thomases. And I was like, hey, Dad, is there any family relationship? He said no, but he did come here often to get his hair cut as a kid. So I just think this is a well-rounded. And if there's any other questions, I would like to move to staff.
We have to go through the proceedance.
I'm just excited. This is awesome.
Just hold that thought. I don't, yeah, I think we'll get there quickly, but.
If I could just respond to that super quick. I am collecting stories. So if you do know people who went there either when it was a grocery store or as the barber shop, I don't know if my contact information is with the materials, but I would love to connect with people.
Staff can always act as conduit, too. If people think of stuff, you can reach out to us. We can find Steve.
Parking is always a concern, and I'm sure that you addressed it favorably and wonderfully. I think I heard you say you were going to bike there. Is there a bike rack? Or where are you going to put your bike?
I will be required to also submit a site plan. And one of the requirements is going to be bike parking. And I will also be applying for tax abatement. And that's a requirement in the tax abatement.
Okay, great. I'm big bike, everybody here knows. But yes, keep biking to work and encourage more employees to do it. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Or neutral? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing because I feel like I know how people are thinking on this. Justin?
I move to staff.
Thank you. Justin has made a motion to move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Also, thank you for not forgetting about Center Street and incorporating that in your presentation. That meant a lot to me as an African-American in Iowa. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I think we're all excited to see your project. The next item is item number nine. Request from Gasman Real Estate, represented by Parsh Davis, for view and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 28226 Ave. And for type 2 design alternatives to allow for construction of a 10-foot-tall electric security fence, A and B. Bert will be presenting the item.
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the city. As the chair mentioned, the request is to build a 10-foot-tall electric security fence around the perimeter of a parking lot. It requires two design alternatives, one of those being for four feet over the maximum, six feet of height allowed for a fence in a street-side yard. And then the other is for a waiver of the requirement that no fence shall be electrified. So the subject property is the Bell Brothers Heating and Cooling on 6th Avenue. It's on the west side of the street, just at the entrance to the Riverview Park. The Polk County Community Center just across the street to the north. This is the layout of the property. You can see the existing buildings. And then I'll zoom in so you can see it. But the red line here represents the fence that they're wanting to construct. Again, it would be a 10-foot-tall electrified fence. It would be located one foot behind an existing chain-link fence. You can see, and I'll let the applicant speak to the security needs that are driving this request. You can see they would enclose their entire parking lot with this electrified fence. This is a design of what that fence would look like. Again, it would be 10 feet tall with strands of electrified wire. And this is another photo that shows how that fence would.
Bert, if I touch this fence, would I die?
I don't believe so. I think, I'm lucky the applicant can speak to that, but that's true. It's just meant to hurt, not kill. So here's a photo looking to the west. You can see the existing fence here surrounding the property, the parking lot. Again, that 10-foot-tall fence would be located just inside, just behind that chain-link fence. I do have quite a few photos. I'll go through them quickly. And I do have quite a few photos, I'll go through them quickly.
So the fence would be inside another fence, is what you're?
Exactly. It would be one foot behind the.
So it'd be hard to like accidentally hit the fence.
True. Right.
Or there's a park right there, so you know.
This is just looking.
Bert, is the entire fence electrified as proposed?
Yeah, just around the parking lot to the north, north and east of the building.
So there, but I think there'd be gaps where the gates are.
Yeah, where the gates are, there, there would be openings. As far as our staff recommendation, we have recommended denial. We do, we don't believe that an electrified fence would be in character with the character of this area, especially given that this is the entrance to Riverview Park and there's a community center just to the north. We do, I guess, sympathize with the property owner for the security issues that they've been experiencing, but we do feel there are alternative security measures, whether that be additional lighting or security cameras or sensors or something else rather than an electrified fence. So we have recommended denial of the two type two design alternatives. And we did not receive any public comment back.
And just to clarify too, the code right now, the only allowance for electric fence is in agricultural uses associated with livestock. So really the intent of the code is to not have these in the city, other than a, in a more ag setting.
Yeah.
Are you allowed to have those like wire?
Razor wire?
Yeah.
Concertina?
No.
No.
Do we have any other electrified fences in Des Moines?
There are a few that have been granted over the years. Prior to adoption of the new code in 2019, those went to the Board of Adjustment and there were instances where people could get special permits to do electric fences. So there are some. Most of them that I could think of are down like around Vandelia or South Amory and more industrial areas. I know this area by North High School does have quite a few industrial uses, but the uses aren't as big, like down some of those salvage yards that didn't get it. Those are pretty big lots, so it's probably a little harder to secure the bigger lots than this. But, but I can't think of any that are like along a major road, like Sixth Avenue.
So mostly industrial areas?
Yeah.
And just to point out, even under the old code, they weren't allowed by right. It was a process. I think, I thought there was a couple examples where it was actually a variance, Bert. I didn't think it was a special permit.
Well, yeah. And no other application, they had pointed out a couple that they had noticed. Yeah, and like Jason said, they were variances by the Board of Adjustment, not special permits.
All right, any other questions for Bert? Thanks, the applicant, come speak, name, address, sign in when you're finished, and you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Michael Pate. I'm with Amarok. I live at 315 South Maple Street in Columbia, South Carolina.
Jason Gasman, president and owner of Bell Brothers Heating and Air Conditioning, 2822 Sixth Avenue. Thank you. You go ahead, story. So I guess, I can, can I use this? I go back and show you guys kind of the incidents here. I'll go back here. Yeah, well, here, I'll start here. First off, I just want to say to everyone that Bell Brothers has been at this location since the 1970s. I'm the fourth president of Bell Brothers. I enjoy the neighborhood. We're a good neighbor. We take care of our property. We've invested in this property over the years. We care deeply about the community of Des Moines. Bell Brothers is my home. It's where I get up and go to work every day. It's my business home. But over the last year, I find myself questioning my business home and my location. We've had five incidences since April of last year where we've had people breaking into our fence, people jumping over our fence. The one that really makes me the most upset is on a Sunday afternoon at 2:30, I'm down working with my 13-year-old daughter. She goes out to throw garbage in the, as you guys can see where those dumpsters are, there's a scrap bin right behind there. And there's a man in that dumpster. And you can see it on the camera. And he is literally, he sees her, she sees him, she runs off, she comes in screaming for me. And I go out there and I'm ready, I'm ready to roll. And he, all he had to do was run right along that corner through the fence and sneak right out. Sorry, that one, that one really bothers me. 2:30 in the afternoon, there's kids playing over at the park, as you can see right down the road there. That's what I'm dealing with right now since April of last year. Before that time, we'd have a, every once in a while, somebody'd break in or, but five incidences since April of last year, to me, has, has really, it's just, it's just gotten out of hand, as far as I'm concerned. Incident number two, you, as you can see right there on the video, I have a camera with lights. They basically jumped that fence at about 2:38 in the morning, back in the night where all the catalytic converters were sold out of vehicles throughout the city of Des Moines. I think most of you probably remember that on the news. We had four of our cube trucks. They just throw their saws all over. They, they know the cameras are there, they walk over, they jump underneath, you watch them haul their loot out and away they go. $10,000 worth of catalytic converters, $30,000 worth of production. I'm out of business. You know, that's where I make my money on those box trucks, installing new systems in homes. Incident number three, let me see if I can go back. Sorry. If you guys see, let me get my bearings here, right here. You guys can't see it very well, but there's a fence where all those properties come together. And there's a, there's an area, that's where they cut and come through and they walk down this alley and get through. And there's nothing you can do. I mean, a camera, a light, you guys say that. We, we put a camera back there on incident number five with a light and an alert. The perpetrators basically knocked that, it was mounted way high, so you'd have to, actually, I think they climbed on my roof to knock the camera down. So the camera was gone by the next morning. That incident number five busted out two windows, stole my duck cleaning camera for $3,000, busted the window, $1,000. Incident number four, they threw a rock at my front window trying to break through. Incident number three, again, they cut that fence behind the building. In that situation, they, they got four vans. They stole Bell Brothers tools, Bell Brothers employees' tools, which I reimbursed my employees at the tune of $15,000. $5,000 in truck windows damaged and another $1,000 in fence repair. Total estimated losses, oh, on top of that, I've got a delivery truck that's still not commissioned because they tried to steal the ignition and hotwire and they busted it all to hell. So estimated losses, which are probably not accurate, are $70,000 since April of last year. Pretty significant in my mind. Paid property taxes of $32,000 to Des Moines. Bell Brothers has been my home for a long time and I love being there. But I cannot remain there and I won't if this, if I can't find a solution to protect myself and my business and my employees moving forward. The system I've picked, I've thought about this long and hard. It does not, I'll let Michael do the talking here, but I picked it. I don't want anyone to get hurt. I don't want anyone to, but I also have to protect myself. I really don't want, I recognize there's a, there's a park over there. We donate to that. But I also can't keep running my business like this, folks. It's just, it's just five, four mornings this year, I've had to come in and scramble to figure out what I'm going to do. I'm just frustrated. So I hope you guys will please listen to what Michael has to say and please consider my, our recommendation here. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to go through a little tutorial, so bear with me. We have installed other devices in this city. We have three of them up right now. Installed them back in 1999, 2000, 2008. I was here for the 2000 and 2008 installs and I'm still here. It's a very simple device, allegedly. Works on a 12-volt battery. We are never connected to the electrical infrastructure at all. Ever. We keep the battery charged with solar panels. So we have a solar array that keeps those, the battery charged for our energizer. The energizer takes that 12 volts and amplifies it to 7,000 to 9,000 volts in one second. So there's nothing on that interior line for one second. When that energizer's loaded, it releases that energy down the line, back to an alarm panel. It takes three ten thousandths of a second for that to happen. So it's a pulsed energy device. We're not even covered by the National Electric Code, so technically, I'm really not even electricity. Once we get that energy back to that alarm system, it's looking for a nice clean return. If I don't get a clean return for five consecutive pulses, set the alarm off, audibly on the site and silently back to our call center. And we start going through a call list. Unfortunately, Jason will probably be on that list if something happens, I'm going to call him at 2 o'clock in the morning and tell him where the break is. Because we know within 10 feet where the breaks are, mathematical algorithm, I can figure it out. We also have cameras of these devices, so we can look at that particular fence line and see what's going on. I'm in South Carolina. We have tropical storms, hurricanes run over us all the time, thunderstorms knock trees down on fence lines. Take them out, you can look at that and say, hey, let's button it up and go back to bed. Or I got five guys in a flatbed truck, cut a hole in my fence, they're robbing me blind. Call the local police department. It's called a verified alarm. Now you've had these things in this city for a while. You've had no problems whatsoever with any installation we've ever installed. No complaints. And most importantly, we've had no crime in those locations. We've stopped crime cold. So 12-volt battery, solar panels, it's tested and labeled to the international and national standards. We have over 6,000 of these all over the country. 6,000. I don't hurt people. But you do get shocked. And the shock is like this, if you, if you're out with your stocking feet, on a carpet, rubbing them across the carpet, reach out and hit a door handle, you get a 15,000 volt static shock. That's less than what I do. But you don't like it, so you don't keep doing it over and over again. They're signed also, so there are small signs up there, but they're very difficult devices to see. The wires are thinner than the wires that are behind the fence line. It's very difficult to see except for the signs that I have to have up there to warn people that there's actually an electrical device there.
It's not you.
I thought you were timing me out. I was going, wow, that was pretty good.
You do only have one minute left, but that was not the sign.
But that was not it, okay. So, you know, that's basically the way it works. The little hitch in the back, that little 90-degree angle back there, very easy for someone to get through there. That is unusual configuration on a lot. A lot of lots don't have that little 90-degree. One more thing is we're talking about the height of the perimeter fence. There are two fences here. The perimeter fence, it's up and we go in behind it. He's had that thing in there since 1990. He's got an eight-foot tall fence. You could see it in the photographs. We're 10 feet tall, so we're going to be a couple of feet taller. You're only going to see about three strands of wire only if you're up and close to it and looking. If you're walking down a sidewalk, you're probably not going to see it. If you're driving down the road, you're not going to see it. It's inobtrusive. You cannot see these devices. So that's basically what we're trying to do, protect his property, protect his family, protect his livelihood, stop the police from coming out there anymore. And that's what we're trying to do here. If you have any questions at all about the device, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do you, do you have any pictures of what this fence looks like?
We have, we have the illustration of what's up there. So basically, I can give you a little description of it. It's 20 strands of wire. They're four inches apart, up to about four feet. After that, they go eight inches apart. Most people are trying to go over the top. That's, it's a very simple reason why we're trying to get taller than perimeter fence. They're both the same size, you're going to stand on the perimeter, drop over, do your dirty deed. When you break out, the alarm goes off. We haven't done our job. If you get up about that high, another two feet over it, no one's going to jump over that. Even in my young athletic days, I'm almost 70 now, I wasn't jumping off something 10 feet tall. I mean, it's very difficult to do without being injured unless you know how to hit and roll and those kind of things. So the height is very important on these devices. When we get the height, we push them down to the bottom where they're going to be cutting if they go through. They'll touch it, they'll turn around, they'll leave their little tools there. I find burglar tools all the time at fence cuts.
If you were like a child walking by and you were just like messing around because you're a kid and like touching, you know, like kids like take a stick and like.
I've been one.
Yeah. So could you get shocked if you did something like that, like inadvertently?
You'd have to be going through it to do that. I mean, the aperture, we're required to be behind an aperture of 2.25 inches. You can't get, can't get your hand through there. A child can't get your hand through there. If you have a piece of metal and run it through there, it would ground everything out. You wouldn't have a shock at all. But it's also safer for a child than an adult. And I don't mean that as being, they're going to be injured. It's just that they have a smaller pipe electricity-wise, so it's going to not go through them as quickly and ground as it will with a full-grown adult like me.
What was the history for property crime prior to this past April? You know, we'd have our incidences like once a year. You know, we've had people break in from time to time, but nothing like this, nothing like the frequency. You know, this is, a group, from what I can gather, working with the police and the detectives, they really feel like it's the same guys starting to, over and over. So these guys have eyes on what we're doing. They're probably watching us during the day is what I would anticipate. And they see that, you know, I'm kind of defenseless, really. I mean, we can shine all the lights and have all the, I mean, no one breaks into our building. We have, you know, security system for that. But the fence, you know, especially, you know, they, they cut through right in that three to four foot on that, in that corner there. All they do is we'll repair the fence and then they'll cut through it again and everything just starts over. I wouldn't be here if the frequency hadn't gone up. You know, I can live with, you know, just some knucklehead who wants to come in once a year or whatever. But this is, guys, this is, it's a lot of money. And the pain of the employees and me and my family, my, I mean, I don't know. I've already told my story about that, but.
Is a, is a electric fence off when the gates are open and you're working during the day? The hours?
The only time he's going to have it on is when he's outside, when the business is closed down. The way the gates operate, it's just got a, basically a contact to it, so the gate opens, everything drops off of it, gate closes, you've got a complete circuit that goes through again. The fire departments usually have a problem with that because they'll walk up and go, hey, 7,000 volts, I'm not going in there. So we provide a knock switch for the fire department. It's keyed just for that particular fire department, which would be Des Moines. They come up there, hit it, open it. It's very similar to what you see in an elevator, when you see a little key switch in the elevator for the fire. That's exactly what it is. So it opens it up for the fire department, they run in, do their deed, whatever it is, putting out a fire, life-saving event. They don't have to worry about closing it back up. We'll, we'll take care of that.
And that situation, I'd obviously get called down and I'm used to that, when the, when the employees go in and forget to turn the alarm off at 6:00 AM like last Saturday.
Would it be possible if you just did the fence in that back little corner? Would that be effective in any fashion?
Not at all. You know, just, just think of it as an open door. And you, you leave your house, you lock your front door and you leave the back door open. Or vice versa. You need to, you need to secure the entire property or it's really not going to work. And that's what, that's our expertise, is perimeter security.
And the one, the one to answer your question too, the one where they jumped the fence, that was over in that corner, right, right as you walked to the park there. I mean, they just jumped it. So the, the main point of entry though has been that back corner. If, I would encourage people to drive by it. You'll see what I'm talking about. It's, it's so protected for anybody.
Do you have any other pictures of how, how it would look? I guess, is it, the main fence is going to be there and then it's going to be within that fence? Or is it going to be on, built on top? Sorry, I Sorry, I guess I, I lost that aspect.
No, it's, it's gonna be a completely separate device that goes behind the existing barrier. So, you've got the perimeter fence up now, it goes behind it. The standard says four, it says 100 to 200 millimeters. That equates to about four to eight inches. So that's about how far away we get. You don't want it too far away because you start taking up a lot of space away from it and you make it easier to manipulate. So you wanna get it pretty tight. On the, on the gates, we actually have it about three inches or so because the gates are usually operated with a chain drive motor and you need to have it really tight on the gate, so we insulate it off the gates. If there's a solid wall, sometimes I'll put it up on a little L bracket on the top of the wall because people usually aren't gonna take a sledgehammer and try to knock a hole in the wall. It's very noisy, people can see what you're doing. Sometimes I build it all the way up inside of walls too because they'll do that. So, it just depends on the situation.
So it's about how many inches or feet off of the original barrier?
It's about four to eight inches behind the barrier that's up right now.
Right there, okay.
Jason?
I have a, I have a question please, it's Will Page here. Uh, you have cited a number of incidents at your property, but you know other people in the area that have similar industrial or semi-industrial uses as well. What have you heard from your neighbors in terms of crime?
I'll be, I'll be honest, like in the, that corridor, the, the Des Moines Cold Storage Building, um, we actually had some, I hate saying this, but we moved out of, we were using that for storage because we, with inflationary times and the craziness of supplies, we, we rented some space and we actually had some stuff stolen out of there recently, so we just moved out of there. That's the only crime I can think of. Uh, most of the, the Des Moines Cold Storage is pretty much vacant directly behind us to the park. Um, there is a, like a workshop right behind us, but they, all their stuff goes inside. And actually, they've been a very good neighbor, they've, they've been keeping an eye on, ever since, we kinda walked over there and told them what was going on, but they don't get affected because they bring everything in and lock it up, they don't have any trucks or anything outside. Most people that are behind us, they don't have trucks outside or, they're, they're really after the trucks that are in the lot there, our, our service trucks and stuff. Hopefully that answers your question. But, the Des Moines Public Building is right beside us, obviously, um, you know, they're, I haven't heard of anything over there. They're very good neighbors, um, for us as well, so...
Did I understand, did I understand it correctly when you said that the, uh, the problem you think is with a gang, that is, people that are intentionally targeting you over and over again? Did I understand that correctly?
That is an assumption we're making, I don't have proof. Um, but it's just coincidental that they've, the last couple incidences have been the same thing, where they knock the back windows out of our service vans and go after the tools. Um, and the, you know, the cameras and stuff like that. I think people have gotten away from catalytic converters now and I've gone on to, um, you know, selling, uh, tools on the Facebook channels or whatever, I've been reading about that. But, I mean, these are pretty significant tools that were stolen from us. Um, and, you know, our employees that these tools were stolen from, uh, they work, they, they invest in these tools. These are their hard blood, sweat and tears. And, of course, I wasn't gonna, they don't have enough money to pay these tools back when they get stolen, so I, I wrote a check myself for it. So, uh, but back to your question, um, you know, across the street, there's a restaurant, I haven't, we, we do some work for them over there from time to time, I have not heard of any break-ins. Again, I think they're zeroing in on the fact that it's very easy to get, um, to our service trucks and there's a need right now and I think it's a good market to steal, uh, tools off service trucks. Draw my honest opinion, but I, I, I mean, I can't say with all certainty.
So, Jason, to be clear, if we support staff and deny this, they still have the opportunity to go to Board of Adjustments?
No, that, that's not correct. And with the new code structure, this is now a Chapter 135 issue. Um, so, plans are in commission and, and City Council, uh, they, any decision you make out of 135 can be appealed to the City Council. Uh, any decision you make on site plans or anything out of 135 where we're looking at design alternatives, Chapter 135 of the City Code can be appealed to the City Council, but it does not involve the zoning board adjustment.
If, if you're not successful here, will you go to the City Council?
Absolutely. It's a life safety issue.
I mean, in a way, it's, uh, not in a way, it's, I mean, it's a crime issue, right? Like, so are the police investigating and arresting?
Those 13-year-old daughters almost ambushed at the dumpster, that's a life safety issue.
Right, right.
Uh, the police, the police are, they're doing their job, I, I support the police, um, but there's only so much they can do. I mean, they, they wanna help, I mean, but there's nothing they can really do. I mean, I just, but the point now where, if it happens again, it's just getting to be normal and I might as well just start budgeting to lose money every year for crime. In a building I've been in since, uh, I don't even need to say it. I mean, my, my whole family's, I'm a second gener-, I'm not a, I'm not a bell, but I'm a gaspman. My dad was the president for me and Bob and Grant ran the business. Some of you might know Bob and Grant, uh, they're both passed on now. But this, this is a legacy business in the city of Des Moines and I'm asking for help. And, um, I don't wanna leave, but I am not gonna, I mean, by the time we go through all the other, I mean, we'll do it, but it's like, I don't know. So, anyway, I appreciate all of you, but, um, I, I don't, I really don't know what to do, frustrated.
Are you familiar with all the millions of dollars the city is going to be putting into the Sixth Avenue corridor?
I've heard rumblings that there's a potential that there might be some stuff in the, in the future.
Right, there's a lot of traffic improvements and bike lanes and that should spur other investment in the area?
Okay.
Do you think that would be, have a positive impact on your business and the safety of it?
I would hope so. I mean, I, I really do hope so, I pray for that. Um, you know, if you go back there right now, um, it definitely could use some, some upgrades. I mean, it's, it's pretty tight back there with, uh, there's a lot of construction stuff and the buildings look old and that are directly behind me where they've been getting through and, so that would be welcome for me, yes. But, I'm kind of one of those that I hear things, but I, I don't believe them until I see signed contracts and, um, actual movement.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna see if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this item. Anyone opposed or neutral? All right, are there questions from the commission for the applicant or Burt? Okay, I'm gonna...
Yeah, I guess one, uh, so there was no negative, so there was no response at all from, okay. Have you spoke with your neighbors and then the surrounding businesses about what you're experiencing? Have you, can you give me any input of what they've said?
Yeah, I've spoke to, well, obviously the, I can't remember the name, it was my service manager that went over there and talked to them, but, uh, the neighbors directly behind me in the brick building, geez, I can't remember their name, but, um, they, they're aware of it, obviously they're trying to help. Um, so their camera has motion stuff on it, so they've actually dinged us a couple times. So, there was actually, uh, two Saturdays ago, um, my service manager texted me and said, hey, uh, the neighbor's behind us, there's that red car driving by again. And, um, fortunately, nothing happened, but there was a vehicle that kinda looked the same, uh, going by. I forgot to mention that, sorry, it's a big room here.
Have you, um, looked into other methods of a security system, having a security person there?
Well, I guess honestly, if, um, this doesn't work, I've gotta figure out what I'm gonna do. So, um, yeah, I guess I'm, either I move or I take my chances with another, but I'm telling you, we, we had a light back there. Um, they ripped the camera right off the wall. Um, we've got lighting around there, could we put more lighting up? Yeah, but if you watch the videos of these guys, um, nothing's gonna stop them.
Are there other, I, I mean, I don't know what you've looked into, but are there other systems that would alert the police or security like directly as soon as something happened?
I'm sure you could probably get a motion system that might do that, but I, I don't know, I'd have to look at it a little bit more. Honestly, this, this was something that I've, I've been working on since last June through a partnership group that I'm in and, uh, they recommended this because it's been successful in other brands like mine across the country and, uh, so, you know, anyway.
Thank you. There are no other questions? Close the public hearing?
I think I was leaving mid-stride when we were discussing examples, what were those examples of other businesses doing this?
Well, there was a couple industrial uses that we are aware of in the Vandelia area of Des Moines, kind of that larger industrial area south of, was, you know, East MLK, kinda not, not too far away from here, but between the river and MLK.
And this would be properly signage, right?
That's what he said.
Yeah, I, I, I struggle with, and I'm sorry, like $70,000 is a lot of money for a business to lose. That's, that's, that's a lot of money. And that's, I've been stolen from as a businessman, that sucks. That, that terribly sucks and I'm sorry you're going through that, you deserve better. I'm leaning towards it, to be very honest. I mean, if you can promise that people are gonna be safe, it's gonna be signed right. You've done your due diligence, you've called the police, you've put up lights, you've put up cameras. Um, I'd like to see what, over, the overnight cost of security, but, yeah, I'm, from your story, man, I'm, I'm fed up right along with you. Yeah.
I'll just add, I, I'm also sort of split on this. I don't like to set a precedent, I don't wanna see, honestly, I don't really understand, I realize it's grandfathered in, why this area is industrial with a park and a community center and a high school. Um, I don't feel like that area should be industrial, but it is. And I appreciate having legacy businesses stay there. Um, and I have a lot of sympathy, I'm a member of an organization that has also had a couple break-ins that is nearby this location and we have lost some equipment, um, worth some money. So, I totally sympathize with this. And the only thing I'm struggling with is setting a precedent of having electric fences go up over this whole area. And I don't think that helps a neighborhood that is very, has a lot of community, you know, resources in it right now.
I am going to dovetail into Carol's conversation or statement about, because I live in Riverbend and I watched the evolution of Sixth Avenue and I know that we are investing a lot of money between Riverbend and Highland Park and we just spent $4 million on a park. And that's the entrance to that park and I don't like the message that it sends unfortunately. And I'm wondering if, working with our at-large council people and Indira and, you know, Linda Westergaard, to try and find other solutions or bring this forward, I don't know. I just feel like there are resources or you could know more about what's happening so that you can feel more confident or, you know, Riverview, that's a great group, you know, to help, that they can help support you in some fashion. I don't know. I just, I don't like the idea of, the only...
You are currently the only person...
The only all-accessible park, I mean, currently accessible park, you know, for handicapped, you know, all abilities children and things like that. I just, it just doesn't look pretty. You're putting your problems on your front door, so...
I, uh, I hate hearing the story about, um, him being at his office and his daughter coming outside and feeling afraid and, and, uh, the break, the repeated break-ins and, at the same time, I hate the idea of a city where, you know, you don't count on law enforcement to protect your property and your only recourse is to put electrified fences around it. I mean, that's a block from North High School. It's terrible, that's a terrible place to live. And so, I don't know, I'm also wondering, is, is, is an armed secu-, like, how much does it cost to have an armed guard there overnight? You know, if they come in and tell them to stop and then shoot them? That's probably better than having an electric fence that's 10-foot tall everywhere. I mean, maybe you could argue that. But, uh, electric, it, it would, it's just, it's nasty sounding. Like, it's kinda better if they just say, you know what, screw it, we're gonna move to, you know, wherever and then our truck is safe in a field and, uh, they sort of vote with their feet. Because the precedent that it sets is that anybody who comes in here and says that they're not safe and the law enforcement's not coming, how do you say, how do you say no? You don't get to put a 10-foot electric fence around your house. So I guess I think they should, I think we should say no and they go to council and say, how come the police don't catch the people that repeatedly steal our catalytic converters and our tools?
And we also have to put it in perspective, I mean, you've been there since 1970 and now it's just been since last April. We're having these problems, so, is it a hiccup? I don't know.
Uh, my comments are, it's not an easy decision and, uh, uh, during this hearing, I've actually gone both ways on this. Uh, at first I was opposed to the idea of having electrified fences in a relatively residential or mixed-use areas. Electrified fences are appropriate for correctional facilities and, uh, concentration camps. At the same time, I understand the huge loss financially and also emotionally of this. So this is not an easy, uh, decision. And, uh, I sort of, uh, I, I still don't know how I'm gonna vote on this.
I would just add my two cents as well. I feel for the, the legacy business. I agree with the comments that have been made, I don't wanna sound like an echo chamber, but, uh, at this point, I am on the, the same position that Francis is at, that I was leaning towards a no, then towards yes, then I don't really know. And then I thought, this may be above my pay grade. So, uh, I, I would be voting no so that council can decide what to do with it and hopefully assign the right resources so that the businesses in our community will continue to thrive and the, uh, the facilities that have been built around this business can also continue to thrive accordingly. So, those are just my two cents.
So I think this might be going back to staff. Actually, let me ask this question to council. Is our concern that it's because it's visible, that the fence is visible to the public? And then the perception of that? Because if that's the case, then my next question is, is it permissible for them to create like a privacy barrier, like with the lattice between the, the original first barrier? Would that have folks leaning more towards yes? So whoever wants to answer that. I, I get it, the aesthetics, for sure. But I don't, well, not, it's not a matter of legacy business and I, I thank you for it, but I'm tired of Des Moines losing businesses, period. We need to keep our best here. And he can easily go up to Northwest Beaver Ave in Johnston and there's plenty of space up there. And I'll be darned to see another business leave, so we gotta, we gotta figure something out.
I, I, I guess to answer your first question for me personally, like, I, like, I think there are other examples in the city of tall opaque barriers, like even Civic Center Court right next to, right next to the Civic Center downtown has tall brick, um, tall brick walls that, you know, probably keep people out of there. So I think, yeah, I think that, that's part of it for me. And then... And then, I think like Johnny, I think it's above our pay grade. I agree, like people, we don't want businesses to leave, but I don't think that's a zoning, I don't think that's a zoning that's in our purview. Like, I can't, I don't think you can solve that with a zoning ordinance. I think that if it's not safe for businesses to operate on Sixth Avenue, you have to reallocate resources within city government to solve that issue.
Yeah, I like that comment, Johnny. Thank you for making that. Is that a motion from you that moves staff and then let it go to city council?
Sure, yep.
All right, there's a motion to move staff, knowing that the applicant can make an appeal on this issue to the city council. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
I vote yes, if you can hear me.
We can, thank you. I'd just like to say, it sounds like you, I think everyone up here has a lot of sympathy for you, and we do want there to be a solution, so I apologize this didn't go the way you wanted it, but I do hope that we, the city council can provide some relief in some way.
So, when it goes to city council, say if it doesn't get approval, can they send it back to us?
No.
Right. Okay. So then they would have to just make a decision about allocation, allocating dollars or how patrolling routes would work?
They can approve it. They could say, no, we want to, we've got ideas on how to solve it otherwise. And I think that's what you're getting at, is that maybe there's resources that can be allocated that nobody at this table controls.
I don't think there were, I think everyone voted-
Yes, no, I had, Katie, I think you didn't vote in favor, right?
She voted. She voted reluctantly at the, you voted.
I, I had-
Oh, I didn't ask for no's.
Yes, I thought I saw two people with their hands down. I assumed it was no's, you and you. Is that accurate?
Oh, did you vote no?
I didn't vote at all.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought everyone, I thought you raised your hand at the end there, so.
Just to, for, I mean, we had more, we had more than a majority of yeses, so the motion has, but just for the record-
Who voted no?
Who voted no?
And Justin?
Okay.
Thank you.
I would make a final comment. So you're in between two large investment centers, so you have Highland Park and you have Sixth Avenue, and then there's talking about the water trails. So I think you have a great opportunity to appeal for some type of relief or resources in that area. They just made that outdoor amphitheater, so I think there is indeed a solution, and I would appeal and press you to reach out to the city council and get some relief, for sure. I know Linda Westergaard is over that area, Connie Boson's a good reach-out, and Carl Voss, who's a sponsor of a lot of those trees around that area, would be a good person to contact, too. But share your story, tell them how it affects it, how you're a legacy business, how we were very much conflicted, and I'm praying that we can find a solution for you.
Thanks, I need to reach out to the council to get my next staff.
Yeah, we'll cover that by staff. We need to move on.
Sounds like Bert can help you. All right, number 10 is a request from Habitat for Humanity, represented by Jason Ekstrom, for a review and approval of public hearing site plan for property at 95 University Ave for Type 2 Design Alternatives A through C. And Michael will be presenting for the city.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Michael Del, planning staff. This is a request from the Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity for the property located at 95 University Avenue. They're needing relief with the three requested Type 2 Design Alternatives to move forward with their project in the existing building at 95 University Avenue. Their first request for a Type 2 Design Alternative is to waive the requirement for insulation of sidewalks along street frontages, allow garage doors facing primary street, Ohio Street, and waive the 12% blank wall limitations for transparency on a primary facade, more specifically Ohio Street. This is the subject property here. It's 95 University Avenue, north of University Avenue with street frontage on University Avenue, Main Street, Indiana Avenue, and Ohio Street. Habitat for Humanity is proposing to move into a pre-existing building, 16,635 square feet. The total site area is 111,013 square feet. They're looking to have office space on the south end of the building and warehouse space on the northern end of the building, and they're looking to use the entire square footage of the building. Here is a sheet from their submitted site plan. It shows the layout of the building and the proposed landscaping. They're being required through the site plan process to bring the site up to conformance with landscaping requirements. As you can see from this layout, the building footprint isn't changing at all. They're sticking with the pre-existing building. They are going to make alterations to the Ohio Street side, which is the eastern facade. Their proposed alterations are moving these windows and doors, the transparency on that eastern facade, and they're going to install six loading door entrances. And these two, removing the transparency and putting in the loading door entrances where they're triggering that requirement on the pre-existing building, to need relief from the building typology requirements. Ohio Street is a primary street within our planned DSM plans. It's not allowed to front a primary street with Ohio Street here, so you can't have those garage doors directly fronting Ohio Street. For the transparency, currently, they had transparency on that side, and it would have likely met the 12% blank wall limitations. They're removing that transparency, bringing it down to about 5.06% facing Ohio Street. So they would be below that minimum transparency requirement with the 12% blank wall limitations. So that's kind of the nexus of the building typologies for Type 2 Design Alternatives that they're requesting here. They're also requesting relief from providing sidewalks along all frontages here. They have four frontages, University Avenue, there's currently an existing sidewalk along University Avenue. They do not have sidewalk along Main Street, Indiana Avenue, and Ohio Streets. From a staff perspective on this, for waiving the requirements for the sidewalk installation, there's currently existing sidewalks on both sides of Indiana directly to the west of the property. There is currently an existing dart station at the south point of Ohio Street along University Avenue, so they have some gaps in their sidewalk in providing sidewalks with this property. And all of the sidewalks around the property are priority level 2 sidewalk gaps within our prioritization map with Move DSM. So these would, like, we would support this from a staff level to be infilled when the site plan's triggered for this requirement. Staff did have dialogue with the applicants during the site plan supplemental process. Staff is supportive of waiving the requirements to install sidewalk along Main Street, contingent on the installation of sidewalk on Indiana Avenue and Ohio Streets, providing that connection from Indiana Avenue and Ohio Street down to the dart stops that are along University Avenue. That would be staff standing on that, just from a support perspective, for the sidewalk For the building typology perspective, from a staff perspective, staff recognizes the difficulty in moving into a pre-existing building, trying to fit a new use into an existing building on site. There's only two possible, two possible sides of the building that can be used for this orientation for loading and exiting, their trucks and everything that they're going to use for the warehouse use. This would be on the north side or the Ohio Street side. The north side would be the Indiana side. Staff doesn't think there would be a significant change from having that warehousing loading entrances on the north side as opposed to the Ohio Street side. Our staff recommendation on this, for the Type 2 Design Alternatives, waive the requirement to install the sidewalk along Main Street, allow garage doors facing a primary street, Ohio Street, and waive the 12% blank wall limitations on the primary streets. Staff does not support waiving sidewalk installation along Indiana Avenue and Ohio Streets. We would be open to waive the requirement along Main Streets with the addition of sidewalks along Ohio and Indiana Avenue. We did not receive any comments for this specific item with our notifications, and there were no email comments. Any questions?
Did you say that they are being required to come up to the current landscaping standards for the parking lot?
There's a change of use on site, and they are required to bring it up to code with landscaping.
And they are meeting that and not getting waivers?
They are getting waivers for the fence frontage buffer requirement. There's a requirement for fence and landscaping buffer around all sides of the property when parking is directly across from right-of-way. If I can go to this first.
Because there's a lot of concrete there, like 83 spaces. I don't know how many employees they're going to have, but the landscaping plan looked sparser than I would expect on a new parking lot.
So they're meeting the fence frontage buffer landscaping requirement. They did seek waiver of the fence requirement. If you can follow my cursor here, they would have to install the fence along all the edges of the parking lot that's directly across from right-of-way. So this southern parking lot and this northern parking lot.
Is your question really about like islands?
Islands, yeah.
Parking lot?
It doesn't look like-
Did you go to the landscaping sheet and just discuss?
Like, right?
You were right.
There you go.
Like that.
Yeah, so I'm trying to remember what all we've talked about, Michael, along the north side there, which is going to be to the right.
So they're installing the landscaping along this parking row here. This is where they requested the Type 1 Design Alternative to waive the landscaping island requirement, the breakup between the parking rows there. They did have a couple spaces where they increased it from nine spaces to 11 spaces with requests from staff.
Obviously, there's no, I don't see any sidewalks on these plans since they want to waive them, but would putting in sidewalks on Indiana Avenue and Ohio Street impact any of the landscaping?
It would. There would have to more than likely be a private easement if there's not enough room for the sidewalk within right-of-way. We can always move around shrubs, but it would be, from staff's perspective, to still require that fence frontage buffer requirement, the shrubs from landscaping.
Well, I think there's like, there was a poll, I remember there being a poll along Indiana, but is there, I don't know if there's any, that the landscaping is in the right-of-way, but just to summarize, what you're saying is that we, to avoid some obstacles, the sidewalk may have to be partially on private property, which could impact some of the landscaping and just how it's arranged?
Correct.
Yeah, I assume they're not undergrounding the utilities, right? Because there's huge poles along-
Yep, they got waiver of that requirement.
They got that waived, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, the estimate on that was pretty significant as compared to the project overall project cost with the reuse of the building.
Right. I mean, Main doesn't even have curbs, so I think asking them to put in, yeah, to put in sidewalks is reasonable, obviously.
This was our dialogue with traffic and engineering, that it would be, we would, we wouldn't gain more than, we wouldn't gain much by providing a sidewalk on Main Street. The priority would be Ohio Street to provide that connection north and south.
All right, thank you. I know the applicant is present. And name, address, sign him when you're done, and 10 minutes.
Madam Chair, Commission, thank you. Lance Henning with Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, 2200 East Uglid, Des Moines. And that Habitat for Humanity, I think many of you are familiar with, so nonprofit that we are creating and trying to preserve affordable homeownership across Des Moines. This is a new office facility for us, and also would handle some of our construction warehousing needs and being able to do that. As we talk through Habitat and part of what we do in addition to the homeownership, so this last year, we created 27 homeownership on our repair program. We did 286 homeowner-occupied repairs. And then we also have a significant, we have our homebuyer education. We also have financial counseling that we do. We are a HUD certified, approved counselor, and so a big piece, we don't have adequate space for our classroom and then space for our staff as well. So this would be an expansion in being able to do that. The space on there, too, it is all existing parking. It all exists there, and there is landscaping in place, and we'll be adding to that as part of that. The warehouse piece that is this here, this building originally, in pastime, was a Pepsi bottling. This was warehouse space that had doors and pieces. So when you look at the windows, the last owner here, put those windows in, filling in the existing doors to be able to, wanted to create office. That never happened. It actually is just an unfinished space on the other side of that on there. So then the intention is for us to really use the existing headers where the old door set and put those garage doors back in place to be able to use that for a warehouse. Your item just before indicated how important it is. We have inside storage and a place to be able to put things inside on there, so that's kind of the intent, is to protect what we have. I want to use the picture here.
Yeah, we'll switch over.
Just as far as existing garage doors and loading docks in the area, the yellow is the facility that we're talking about for Habitat, and then around there are all places that have garage doors or loading docks facing streets. So there's 15 garage doors and 23 loading docks that are facing streets, including That would be the warehouse, the warehouse piece. And then for the sidewalks, so there is an existing sidewalk on University, the property that is in this corner here, so there is no sidewalk on Ohio here, and then we're talking about sidewalks that would be for Ohio and Indiana is what we'd like to ask for relief So if we were able to set those on there, that there are utility poles in particular that would also influence that, how those sidewalks sit. So along Ohio, we'd have to kind of push and just hit around those, and then on Indiana, the utility poles, you would have to move into Habitat's property, be out of the right-of-way into Habitat's property to miss several of those poles, and then on the corner of Ohio and Indiana, right here, that pole, there's not really a way around- a way around it, so we would have to move the pole itself to be able to, be able to hit those and get those connected in there. So from the concrete side alone on the sidewalk, you're $16,000, $17,000. Indiana, when you push that in, you'll be tearing out landscaping. So there's nice landscaping there already. We're going to add to it. We have to tear the landscaping out, come back, and then move in the utility pole as part of that. And so with all those pieces, I think, and then the other piece. The blue lines are your existing sidewalks in the neighborhood. Again, this is an industrial area. It is not residential. It is very much warehousing, commercial, industrial piece on here. And then this Indiana here, so this road here, that is the existing sidewalk looking down Indiana back towards Second Avenue. So there, it is a neighborhood that does not have sidewalks, and that priority type So I think, you know, it's a piece, it's a piece for us as we think about how we want to invest in the people that need housing and trying to be able to have the right facility to do that. And in a place, putting in a sidewalk that is going to see almost no use, it doesn't make sense for us to be investing those dollars there. So we're asking for relief on all the sidewalks, and then the actions, the other two actions are related to the garage doors. So thank you for your time there.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if I missed it. These sidewalks are categorized as priority type 2?
Yeah. The whole, the entire area?
The entire area.
I think so, the way it looked.
All right, are there any questions?
I have a question for the applicant. The population that you serve, it's mostly low income, is that correct?
Yeah, so everyone's below 80% of the area median income that we serve.
And will they be coming to this facility?
Yes.
Does most of the population that you serve, do they own vehicles?
Yeah, some use the bus system, so University would have the bus. And they, most probably, you know, in the Des Moines area, there's a lot to get to work and that, you do need a vehicle, so majority of folks do have a vehicle, and we do have some that use the transportation system.
And the folks that use the transportation system, are you just expecting them to walk on the street when they come through Ohio?
I would expect they would be on University, and they, they would walk from University to the building.
So there will be no public access to this side, to Ohio Street?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the main entrance, this is University over here, and the entrance will be here.
And the bus stop is somewhere over here on University?
It's on Ohio. It's, I believe it's at the Ohio intersection, thereabouts.
Like University and Ohio?
Yes.
Like right here?
I'm disappointed that you think that everybody needs a car to get to work in Des Moines. I hope you consider bicycling before you think that everybody has to own a car and maybe use the DART. I think there was one rap you were going to provide. Have you considered maybe promoting your clients to ride to your facility, especially because the city is going to be committing millions of dollars to extend the trail on that side of the river just down the street from you?
Certainly, certainly something that our staff is already excited about on there from a standpoint of our families, the way we promote that. We do work with the street collective, and the street collective has been supportive of providing bikes to the Habitat families.
Okay. And your employees, will you provide indoor bike parking for them?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's already a plan for the bike parking, and we're also, folks are interested in the, how we do that indoors because they have concerns on storing it outside.
Okay, so you'll have indoor bike parking, that's fantastic.
Yeah, we're working on it, it's not.
Okay.
I think, I think we will, so.
Yeah, it's not just from security, it's from if I have it outside and having to start to rain, it's kind of a bummer to get on the wet seat or ride it after that. Also, there's two tenants there currently, and I think the presenter said that you were going to be using the entire facility, but the sketches show that you're keeping the sign of the dialysis center, so that's a little confusing.
Yeah, Habitat's use will be the area without the tenants, so I mean, there's two tenants that will stay for the immediate future on there.
Okay, so they'll remain?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you considered solar panels? It's a nice flat building with a nice southern view.
Yeah, we're very much over budget, and we have not had the opportunity to be able to incorporate that into the overall plan.
Thank you.
To follow up on Jonathan's question, could you show the sidewalks again, please? I have, I have a question along that line, please.
Which one?
What is it you want shown, Will?
The sidewalk situation. Yeah, please.
The sidewalks.
Are you looking for Lance's sheet, his analysis, or are you looking for an aerial in the staff presentation?
My question is, the sidewalk from University proposed up to Ohio, the entrance to the building. I'm wondering if there's any impediment there in terms of utilities or landscaping.
Okay, so we need to go to the site plan sheet and zoom in on the University side to show, can I, that front area. Will is asking about the access from the build, between pedestrian routes between the building and University Avenue?
Yeah, that's right, thanks.
So it looks like they're proposing a crosshatched part of the drive be dedicated as a pedestrian route. Is that what that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
So if someone got off the bus, they could take that little.
Right, so they'll cut up through the driveway and walk in the striped area?
Yeah.
Okay, that answers my question, thanks.
Good question, Will. All right, are there any other questions for Lance? Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
As always. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak in favor of this item? Any opposed or neutral? All right, are there any questions for Bert or Michael before we close the public hearing? Jenny?
Yeah, a question for staff. We had a, an event center that not that long ago came across our review stage up on the corner of Indiana and Main Street, and they installed a sidewalk on the Main Street side. Was that one of our requirements, or did they ask for that to be waived?
I believe the recommendation was to waive Main Street sidewalk, but defer sidewalk on Indiana Avenue and Ohio Street for, I think, two years.
Well, you're, are you asking about the, to the north or to the east? Go to the, would you go to the aerial, please?
Sure. To the west.
Oh, to the west.
There are, there are a couple, right?
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's, I'm sorry, yeah, to the west.
So there's that, that building.
Michael was thinking of the property to the north.
Yeah, to the north, but.
That was deferred, the one to the north.
That's the one where they've asked for an extension on the way, a temporary, they were granted an extension of time, and then they came back and asked for another extension, and they were given a second extension, but I think they also asked for it to be waived, and the commission said no. But the property to the west had, was redeveloped and sidewalk was installed on Main and Indiana. I don't believe that they've requested any relief. I think they just did it, and it was, you know, a standard common, of course.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, only the property to the north.
Thank you.
What's, what's the, this area's priority for walkability and sidewalks, I guess?
It's, if I, it's priority 2. So the transportation plan has sidewalk gap analysis and has priority 1s, 2, and 3. And basically, that's a priority of how the city is going to allocate funding. So meaning, the city is going to go in and fill gaps in priority 1 routes first. Those are the highest priority. Then priority 2 would be the next, and the 3 would be the, the furthest out. So that, that's kind of what that, that is set up to be a guide for.
What's the year span for priority 2, the minimum to the maximum? Or is there one?
I don't know that we have a year set on priority 2. I know when we created the design alternative process for priority, you know, to offer some relief that staff could offer, you know, we were asking ourselves, you know, if we have people put into escrow and defer construction, like how far out does it make sense to do that in relationship to when is the city going to be in an area to budget? And my fuzzy memory, you know, to be in an area, my fuzzy memory is like priority 2 might be, you know, 20 years out or something along those lines.
So my neck, oops, sorry.
Okay. But the, just, the prioritization isn't necessarily intended to, it's still a question of a site plan. So site plan comes in, it's a requirement, and then we just make, make a decision on whether or not it should be waived. We look at the priority route information, but that's just a factor. Also, you know, we should look at other things, which is what the staff recommendation is based on, is bus stops, existing network, relationship to kind of broader area and goals and those things.
One final question. Did traffic and transportation have any concerns with the installation of sidewalk along Indiana and Ohio?
They did not. They said that it would be possible for the applicant to construct both sidewalks along Indiana and Ohio Streets. Main was where they had a little bit of discrepancy on if it was possible with the condition of the streets. And this property is within the Central Place industrial park, so there is a effort to promote connectivity throughout the area. They are industrial uses, but that's, it's, it's going to be required of every property going in, in this area, especially along the Ohio corridor. And the driver for that is envisioned as commuting to these businesses, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or going as a patron to these businesses?
Yeah, Ohio Street is, that, since that's the bus stop, it's thought, you know, if an employee or somebody that's going to frequent one of these businesses to the north, they'll get off there and go north on Ohio.
Makes sense. Yeah, currently, there aren't any DART stops within, north of this property within the Central Place district. So providing that connectivity down to University would be paramount and a goal of staff and our transportation plan.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Michael. And then close the public hearing. I have some thoughts. I think Habitat does a great amount of good for our community. They provide affordable housing to families who otherwise couldn't invest in a house, which is a great way to build wealth. It's a great opportunity for those families to get themselves somewhere better in life and their, and their families. And I know there's precedent for us waiving sidewalks for other nonprofits, maybe not just because they're nonprofits, but Food Bank of Iowa comes to mind, that's before we had the priority of sidewalks. But that would have been priority 2 or 3, I assume, because they're kind of in an industrial area as well. So I'd like to follow that precedent and waive these for Habitat.
You know, I absolutely agree on the goodness that Habitat does. However, I'm going to go back to Justin, who said we want to do everything to keep our businesses in town, you know, in Des Moines, and why would we burden a small business owner? You know, compared to, yes, nonprofit, multimillion dollar, does good. And I just wonder if the priority, I think the sidewalk thing is just, is just a big challenge for us. And so I was hoping that we had this resolved, and not yet, so.
I would like to add some comments as well. I also appreciate the mission and everything that Habitat does for the families and the city of Des Moines. And we have established a precedent, whenever we have a Habitat project, that we, we seek ways to be able to accept, whether it's a garage for a shed or whatever the case may be that be constraining the project itself. So I will continue to promote that. In this case, I will be in support of staff. I think there have a lot of waiver, there have been a lot of waivers that have been given already. We talked about the landscaping, we talked about not providing one on Main Street as far as sidewalk goes, in addition to the other two requests. So I just wanted to state that when it comes to sidewalks, as Carol mentioned, we're investing a lot of money on the trail that's going to be right at the end of Indiana Avenue. There are sidewalk, there's a sidewalk on the west side of this property. This will provide another property with that sidewalk connection, and eventually, when the other two or three properties that are east of this site, we will have a sidewalk connection to that trail. And we have already discussed the impacts of Ohio Street, so I don't have to go into that. But I just wanted to mention that that's why I will be supporting the staff recommendation along with the waivers that they have included in that list.
Is that a motion?
If nobody has anything else to, to add or to discuss, then I will move staff.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to move staff, all in favor.
Just one thing, are you, I think staff is open to reducing the requirement on Main Street. Was your intent to?
They waived it. Yeah, wait.
They're recommending the waiver of Main Street.
Okay. Are you good with that? Just making sure it's clear, no problem.
If you move the staff recommendation, it would include waiver.
All right, there's a motion to move staff, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Will. And that is the end of our public hearing items. We do have election of officers, so the nominating committee has put a slate of officers together for the 2023 year, and it is, what?
For the last item, there is a mistake. There's a typo on the staff recommendation, waive the requirement to install sidewalk along Main Street. So it says, it says it in the top too, that it's waive the requirement. There's a typo below. It should be, staff does not support waiving the requirement along Indiana Avenue and Ohio Street.
Right, that's what they moved.
Okay.
That's what we moved, yeah.
I'm just, which line is the typo?
Waive the requirement to install sidewalk along Main Streets, the staff recommendation on the bottom.
Right, I think the typos, that really should have been above, that should have been a part of the, the first wave of stuff we were supporting.
Yes, it should be, staff does not support waiving Ohio Street and Indiana.
We got it, we're good.
Thank you. So the slate of officers is Abby Chungitt for Chair, Johnny Aspar for Vice Chair, and Leah Rudolphy for Second Vice. Leah Rudolphy for Second Vice Chair. All in favor of this slate of officers, please raise your right hand. And Will, how do you vote?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Will, very emphatic.
That's an aye.
Any committees and directors reports?
No, but I, I think we should go rolling on the meeting and we didn't, I don't know that we really welcomed Carol. I think it's, I think part of the problem is we all know her, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dory's last meeting was in December. We gave her a big, big round of applause. So welcome aboard officially, Carol, but that's all I have, thank you.
Welcome, Carol, I'm sorry about that. You do feel like part of the family already, so that is probably why.
I guess the only other thing I would add, we will have a 5:30 session at the next meeting where our staff's going to talk a little bit about the commission's charge and then a little bit about our division 2. You know, we talked about doing some training and that's what that's hoping to accomplish.
All right, so I'll be here at 5:30 on February 2nd. Thank you.
You are currently the only person in this conference. Please wait while others join.